We have permits and applications. We have department reports from the fire department, water sewer department, town administrators. We have some action items, discussion of traffic issues on Fakwa Road. We have an appeal of a water bill. We have approval of a head mechanic job description for the Department of Public Works. We have an acceptance of a resignation. We have a request to accept the purchase and sale agreement for 501 Main Street. We will be discussing the host community agreements for the retail sale of marijuana. We will review the proposed warrant articles for the January 27, 2020 special town meeting. And then we have a request for a waiver of $275 zoning board of appeals application fee for the fiscal water pump station project. Then old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, and citizens forum. Then we will adjourn. Please excuse my voice. I think I've been singing too much. Okay. Mike, do you have the legal notice?
Legal notice or the reason for going into executive session?
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
The purpose for going into executive session is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
So declared. Okay, do we have a second to the motion? Okay, how do you vote, Priscilla?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Priscilla, do you have anything?
No, other than to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and the best for the holiday season and the new year.
That's it. Okay, Mike, do you have anything?
Yes, today's the first day of Hanukkah, and I want to wish everybody Happy Hanukkah and Merry Christmas nine days from today, and Happy New Year, as soon as we won't be seeing each other until after the New Year.
Next year. Chase?
Just wish everybody a happy holiday, safe holiday season.
Mary. Saying Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy Healthy New Year.
Okay, and I'd like to reiterate that. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy and Healthy New Year to everyone. Okay, we have a few minutes before our public hearing. We probably do have time to do the appointments.
Ms. Gorman is here this evening.
Okay. Would you like to come down and sit, please? Okay, Jeff?
Ms. Gorman has expressed an interest in serving on the open space committee. Visiting Jean and I with Ms. Gorman last week, and she's got a sincere interest in open space and recreation in the town, so I think she'd be a really good fit for the committee.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Thank you for stepping forward. I'm sure you'll be an asset. Is there a motion from someone?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Russ? Good evening.
Mr. Chamberlain expressed an interest in serving on the betterment committee, and Russ has been active in other things and has added true value to what he's brought to each committee he's worked on, so I would recommend him to the betterment committee.
Yes, and the makeup of the betterment committee does require one member from the planning board. However, it's not a planning board appointment, it's a board of selectmen appointment. So, Russ, looking forward to it?
Do what I can.
You always do, and you always do a good job.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is there a motion then?
So moved.
Seven.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
I feel like Santa Claus, because that's the committee that dispenses money.
That's true.
We'll see.
He watches the pennies.
Hey.
Okay.
Maybe the fire department will get some.
Okay. We can breathe for a minute and a half. We don't really have time to fit anything in before the public. Okay, for those in the audience and at home, a public hearing is posted at a certain time, and we can't start any earlier. We can be late, but not early. Said someone's coming tomorrow about that?
Yes, we pray someone's coming tomorrow about that. I guess it's.
It sounds like it's going to take off or fall apart.
Or blow up.
Time bomb.
Depends what day it is.
I was hoping when everybody got in here and the action started going, it would heat up on its own in the room, and you wouldn't need the heater.
Give it time.
Time. Put a hot towel on Thursday.
Okay, I have 6:30. Mike, do you have the legal notice?
Legal notice. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. regarding the application of a restaurant all alcoholic beverage liquor license filed by SNL LLC doing business as Old Sturbridge Pizza. This hearing will be held at Veterans Memorial Hall, Sturbridge Town Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass., and that was published on November 21, 2019.
Samantha, do we get the green cards?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I have a question.
Oh, no, that's okay. As long as you know we got them.
Yeah.
Okay, could you please come down front?
My name is Dennis Powers, your attorney representing the applicant. To my right is Ms. Garone, the cause manager, and her husband, Mr. Singh. They both have certificates in the application, SafeServe and TIPS. Mr. Singh has 10 years' experience in the food business. He's worked, he worked at Sturbridge Peaches since 2017, so he worked under the old owner and worked in the service of alcohol at that establishment. We've submitted a diagram of the proposed build-out. We're projecting it to be, it costs approximately $25,000. I can have Mr. Singh speak to that if that's the board's pleasure.
Okay, does anybody have any questions on that? Priscilla?
You said they were both TIPS certified?
One's TIPS certified and one's got a food safe.
Is that a safe?
Serve safe, I'm sorry.
So the gentleman has the E-TIPS, is that correct?
She does.
She does also?
Yes.
Because I only see.
No, just her.
Just you? You're the one who has it? Ah, okay.
The proposed.
And you have the serve safe?
Yes.
All right, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, I just have a question on your diagram. You have a pool table listed?
Right.
Okay, you'll have to apply for a license on that?
For the pool table?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, it's not, do you know offhand, Samantha, the cost?
No.
No, that's okay. It's not expensive.
Right. We'd be happy to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, it is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who has a question or a comment? Okay, is there a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Someone willing to make a motion? Oh, so?
I'm not seeing, maybe I'm just missing it, the hours of operation.
11 to, for the restaurant or the bar?
All of the.
Both.
11 to 1.
You say what the, what were the hours last?
It was 11 to 1.
Yeah, those are usually the normal hours. Is that okay, Priscilla?
Yeah, that's why, I just couldn't find it.
Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion that we grant a new license for Old Sturbridge Pizza at 392 Main Street to SNL LLC, as stated on the application.
Is there a second?
Seven.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have a live entertainment permit for Sawdust Coffee House and Dessert Bar, Peter Champagne. Is Peter here? This is the one I had questions on, the hours of operation. Says Monday to Thursday, 6:30 to 5:00, Friday, 6:30 a.m. to midnight, Saturday, I think that's 7:00 a.m. to midnight, and Sunday, 8 to 3:00.
Eight to 3:00?
Also don't have a signature from the police chief.
Chair's signature is on mine, but I just didn't have a copy until.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I might understand this, that from 6:30 in the morning, they're going to start serving liquor, is that correct?
On those days, Sunday, Sunday it says 8 to 3:00.
But other days, they're going to start serving liquor at 6:30.
According to their hours.
This is an entertainment permit though.
Yeah.
Yeah, this isn't.
He's already got his liquor permit that I believe we saw entertainment from 6:30 a.m.
To 5:00 p.m.
I know, there's questions. It's the hours that are really.
I think he should come in. I think the hours of operation, he meant that they will be, well, I can't put words in his mouth.
I know, I know.
That they would be open that time, but I can't imagine entertainment starting at 6:30 in the morning.
Or liquor.
But he should revise this and.
What's he going to open for then? I know. No, I know, but I, I don't know. He should really come in, because Samantha, do you offhand know what hours he put on his common victor?
No.
No. And I'm sure his.
I think he's confusing his hours of operation with a coffee house to be open with the entertainment.
I just think he listed their co-terminus, so he'd get him entertainment anytime.
Yeah.
Yeah, but 6:30 in the morning?
You know, some people are just getting off work, want to, you know, go have some
coffee, listen to a little guitar bar, you know.
I think they'd want to go home.
We typically ask people to come in.
I'm, we're surprised he's not here.
Because, I mean, his liquor license has hours on it too there, so if we could get those all together and have him come in, because I don't think he's going to be ready to open in two weeks.
All right.
For our next meeting. Okay, I'll write that. He's probably over there now, because he's quite busy. Okay, next, we have a request for change of manager. Ocean State Job Lot. Do we have anyone from?
Ocean State?
Ocean State.
The manager, the.
A lot of no shows tonight.
The no, the.
I know.
The new manager isn't here.
Rhode Island, guess North Kingston.
Yeah, the proposed one lives right in North Oxford. Okay, again, could we please request they come in? Okay, next, we have department reports, fire department, Chief Garso.
All right, he's here.
Thank goodness you didn't stand us up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have three months' worth of reports that I think you have copies of, correct?
Yes.
And I just want to make a note that we did have a technology issue, and the numbers that you see reflected in these reports are lower than the actual numbers. When you get the report for the end of the year, you'll see the increase. We had a little problem with our vendor, and RIT Department did a wonderful job in rectifying that situation.
You sound like talking to the Telegram and Gazette about their delivery.
Good luck with that one.
Good luck.
Other than my reports, I only have good news, so if, are there any questions on any of the month's reports?
Does the board have any question on the reports?
So I wanted to share some pleasant information. We held our first Citizens Fire Academy in the month of, months of October and November. It was a very successful program. We had five participants who were shown the ins and outs of the fire service, kind of a 10,000-foot view, but enough that they got a pretty good firsthand look at what we do. From those five participants, we actually got three applications, which was our goal, to try and entice some people to apply to be call firefighters. So I'm very pleased with that. We will be doing that program again next year. Hopefully, we'll be able to double the number of participants. The other bits of information I wanted to share with you, last week, we were awarded two Department of Fire Services grants, one in the amount of $850 to buy firefighting gear, and the other in the amount of $6,416.72 to buy a gear, turnout gear washer slash extractor. And the purpose of these grants statewide is to support cancer prevention. The new buzzwords in the fire service are, are cancer prevention, because we're exposed to so many carcinogens throughout the duties that we do every day. So, thank you to DFS for that. I am working diligently with several vendors to find the best option for us for the gear extractor. The gear money will be bought, will be used to buy firefighting gloves for the firefighters.
What is a extractor?
It's a wash, basically, it's a wash machine, but it's made to a certain standard because of the gear we were, yeah, exactly.
Okay, Chief, who helped write the grants?
These two grants were actually written by firefighter Sean Moynah, so kudos to him. Thank you for bringing that up. We also received today, I think, a $1,500 grant from Walmart. The purpose of that has not been determined yet, but you will actually see the request to accept that grant probably for your next meeting. Came in late this afternoon. And we also received a SAFE grant to continue with our SAFE program in the amount of $3,000.
Excuse me, what was the amount?
$3,000.
Three.
So all good news.
Congratulations. Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Anything else?
My one in monthly, bimonthly public service announcement, please dispose of your ashes properly. We're already seeing incidents of improperly disposed ashes that are causing fires. We had one today, as a matter of fact, that could have been much more severe than it was. So wood burning stoves, fireplaces, please dispose of them in a proper reciprocal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and have a nice Christmas.
Thank you, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, next, we have water and source, Shane.
Hey, good evening, Shane.
How you doing?
Good, you?
Good. I submitted the operation reports for October and November, and I'll sign with any questions you might have on those.
Okay, any questions from the board? Nope, so.
So like the fire chief, I have nothing but good news for a change. All the hydrants have been winterized and the flags were put up, so that's all set.
Are they all working?
Well, we have one out of service that actually we can't repair. We have to dig it up and replace it, and I spoke to Butch about that. We'll do that. We're just going to wait for a day where we got some decent weather. But besides that, the rest of them are working.
And where is that one, Shane?
On Maple Street.
Okay.
All right. So there's another hydrant close by that they could use if they had an emergency, and they're aware that it's out of service. We finished the UCMR four testing with the EPA, and all the results came back negative. So after two months of sampling with them, all our samples came back clean, so it's a really good thing, because unregulated contaminants eventually become regulated contaminants, and when they do, we won't have any issues. Besides that, obviously, with all the rain and snow, we've seen a significant increase of flow at the wastewater treatment plant. We actually have the biggest tank offline, and we will still be able to handle over 1.1 million gallons a day with no issues. So the plant, that's the first time we've had a big rain event with a big tank offline. And we're a little concerned about how it would react, but the place ran like a champ, so I honestly believe in the map, that place is only permitted for like 1.3 million. I bet you we could put two, maybe two billion gallons a day through there if it ever gets to that point, so the technology the town pays for definitely works in high flows. And at some point, and it's just some, and some advice, you know, you spend over $300,000 a year going to South Bridge every year. At some point, you should look into maybe bringing that flow back to your own plant. Granted, the payback time's probably going to be 15, 20 years, but if you never take that, you're just going to have to keep paying South Bridge, and you know those fees are never going to go down. So maybe at some point, you might want to have an engineer look into what, you know, what the cost would be to put in your own pump station. You have to run a pipe from the town line pretty much up to where Annie's kitchen is. But then you're treating, you know, you're treating it at your own plant instead of paying them, so it's just something you should look into in the near future.
Can I just join?
Mary?
Because I do recall us making it, the wastewater treatment plant, large enough to accommodate our flow to South Bridge in the event we needed it to.
Right.
I remember asking, we asked Jim Malloy, I was on the finance committee at the time, and so we do have the capacity, so that's something that you should keep in mind.
And currently, it's only 30,000 a day, so there wouldn't be a problem. But I know there's a person trying to put a big development in down that end of town too, and all that flow would go to South Bridge too, so.
What development are you talking about?
I haven't seen, the guy called me a couple times, so whether where he is and whether he's even actually put a plan in yet, but there's a big chunk of land down by the town line that, you know, more than, on more than one occasion, I've been approached by people asking, you know, is the town water and town sewer available? So that's just something to keep an eye out for.
Right, and the rates in South Bridge are higher than our rates.
I don't know what the exact rate structure is, I just know, and don't quote me, but we're spending about $300,000 a year in paying South Bridge. So, and like I said, you know that's not going to ever go down, it's just going to keep increasing, so at some point, you should look at, you know, it's going, it's an investment, and the payback's going to be a long period of time, but if you don't ever do it, you're never going to pay yourself back. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, anything else from the board?
All right, thank you. Have a good holidays.
Yes, you too, Shane. Okay, excuse me, next, we have town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple items. At the last meeting, we talked about Diverty on New Boston Road, and there was a question on whether or not he was going to do any abnormally lengthy excavation, and he's not. There's four lots that are ready for houses. All they have to excavate is the septic system and the basement, so it'll be just a straight-up building permit deal on those lots. Last Friday, the Cedar Lake Association and Conservation and I went over to, or DOT, to meet about the improvements to the turnpike that are flowing into Cedar Lake. DOT did some short-term repairs, and we talked about their long-term improvement plan. Very positive meeting. DOT has a set of plans to fully fix the drainage issues into Cedar Lake and off the turnpike, so that should be in 2020, when they resurface that section of the road. But the plans are incomplete, and there's still some issues, you know, detail issues to work out between Cedar Lake Association and DOT, but all things considered, it was a positive meeting. At the last meeting, there was a request to look into the cable TV committee. From what I found, that disbanded in 2015 and just kind of lost its wind. I don't know if there's a desire to put that back together, or if there's issues that we can look at one at a time, but that's up to the board.
Yeah, I think it was basically initiated when we were looking at the new contract.
Yeah, but there's no current members on that committee.
So how's the board feel about that? I mean, that was the main purpose of it.
Yeah, the reason I brought it up was because we've been getting a lot of letters on cost, you know, pricing increases from, from the cable company, and, you know, quite frankly, I'd like to, you know, look into it, see, make sure that, that everything that that our cable operator is doing is in accordance with our agreement.
Okay.
And just, just to have a review, it's kind of midterm on the contract, I believe, right now. I don't, I don't know when, how much longer we have.
To 2025.
2025, so we're halfway through the contract, and it might be, might be a good thing to review where we stand, because I think there were some, some commitments as well that, for example, for, for a link with fiber, a fiber link was included in that, that contract. I don't know if that work has been done or not, but I thought all of the major municipal buildings were supposed to be linked with fiber optic cable, that sort of thing. Are we on schedule with that or not?
This is the first I've heard about it. I've not had a chance to extensively review the franchise, but I will get into that and see if that's been completed.
But that was the reason for my request, was to, just to review that, the contract, and make sure that we're not being, you know, the townspeople aren't being charged excessively for their cable bills and that sort, okay, sort of thing.
Okay, how's the rest of the board feel? Priscilla?
Mary, if you remember a couple of years back, or three or four years maybe now, that we were losing service at night because they were upgrading the cable lines, and I'm thinking that that could be when some of that happened, different parts of town.
Town at different times.
You'd lose your, you'd lose your services, and it was told to us that they were upgrading the lines, and that was. And it was told to us that they were upgrading the lines, and that was what was causing that. And it lasted a few months, and then it stopped. It doesn't happen anymore, from what I'm told from people, because I don't have it anymore. I dumped it, but up until last year, when I had it, it had stopped.
Okay, how do you feel about seeing if we can revive?
Oh, I think Charter is out of control, and I think that the service that they provide is horrendous. From what I'm hearing from people, I'm seeing the feedback on social media, for one thing, will tell you, "I live on this street, cable's out again, I live on this street, cable's out again," and on and on and on. I do think they have some responsibility to the town without doubt.
Okay, Chase, how do you feel about reviving it?
I agree, we should revive it. We've heard complaints at our meetings.
And on the street and everywhere.
Everywhere, you know, we should bring back that committee and try to get it going.
Okay, Mary?
I agree, there's really no downside to it.
Okay, so Jeff, another advertisement for?
We'll put out a notice.
Okay.
This one you might get a little over.
And there's a series of additional documents on the podium this evening. There is a revised purchase and sale agreement for 501 Main. There were a couple typos in the ones in the packet, so we changed that. There's a, kind of a letter from Waze. I did get a text response back, and I typed it up, because it was just a screenshot. So, there is something from Waze on my email or my text to them about the issue of Farquhar Road. The additional agenda item, the ZBA, there's a set of diagrams of the pump station at your, in your packet as well that was put out tonight. There's a letter from one of the residents of Farquhar Road. She wanted that in the record this evening, 'cause she may not be here. Donna Englander, is she here?
She's not here.
She's not here? So, she wanted that, her comments known by the committee. There's a, some things from CPC and an email from 253 regarding marijuana. And then, there's a series of diagrams related to the senior center study that were also left in your mailbox or on the podium this evening. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and a memo from Attorney Castanza about the thing she heard at the last meeting from the HCAs, and she'll go over that with you when we get to the agenda.
Okay, any comments or questions for the town administrator?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have some action items. First listed is to discuss the traffic issue on Farquhar Road. And before we begin, I just wanna be, oh, sorry Lynn, my voice is, I just wanna be upfront about it. I am, I live on Farquhar Road too, so, and
I do as well.
Selectwoman Jimis does too. Now, I know there are several people that have comments. Did anybody get together to get a spokesperson, so that we don't get into a situation where we're hearing the same thing over and over? No. Okay, I do know we had. Yeah, well, we did have requests from two people, so I will call on those. Lynn, would you like to address us, please?
Are you going to read aloud the letter?
Excuse me, can you wait till we get to that? Okay, would you introduce yourself for the board and the audience, please?
Lynn Peterson, Farquhar Road. So, we know this problem has been going on for quite a while. Last year at this time, I had foot-deep ruts across my front yard because people were sick of waiting in the gridlocked traffic and were turning around on my front lawn. So, at considerable expense, I put a fence across the front. They are still managing to back up into my skinny little driveway and get onto my front lawn to turn around. Unfortunately, that's not the most important issue. My husband is receiving a drug that carries an extremely high risk of a heart attack. He's under strict instructions that if he has any symptoms at all, he is to get immediately to the nearest hospital, not wait for the ambulance, get immediately to the hospital. Unfortunately, this becomes a bit of a problem if you get to the end of my driveway and you can't go up Farquhar Road because the traffic is gridlocked, and you can't go down Farquhar Road because the cars are all stopped on the one-lane bridge, and they have nowhere to go. They can't go forward because the traffic is stalled in front of them. They can't go backward because there's traffic behind them. So, you're stuck, you can't go anywhere. So, unfortunately, this becomes a life-threatening situation in this case. Now that you're aware of this, I trust that you will do the right thing and see if this problem can be remedied. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lynn, Lynn, I do wanna say that the board has really been well-aware of this for quite a while, and we have been reaching out to different sources to see what can be done. So, we do know, thank you though. Okay, is Mr. Buck here?
Smith.
Mr. Smith.
Oh, Buck Smith, okay. Would you please come down?
Do I have to reintroduce myself?
Uh, yes, that's basically for the people at home. And could you please take your hat off, thank you?
Really?
Really.
I didn't do my hair. Buck Smith.
That's okay, I didn't either.
Again, just to reiterate what Lynn had said, it's absolutely, you can't get over the bridge, you can't get out of Blueberry Lane. We had, the last episode, just a couple weeks ago, there was a citizen, a resident, that went out and directed traffic at the end of Farquhar to get it moving. So, there he is standing in traffic, directing traffic, not really his job. Another part I'd like to add to Lynn's is if, if a medical marijuana dispensary goes in over around Paletti's Old Shop, you know they're gonna route the traffic again up Farquhar. So, again, we're gonna have more traffic on that road. Tractor trailers flying down that road, even when there's not traffic, you have tractor trailers. I mean, two cars have all they can do to get by each other, let alone a tractor trailer at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning screaming down that road. Buses, tour buses on that road when they start dumping off of 84. I'm almost positive that bridge probably isn't designed to take that type of traffic. And nor are the residents, really, should expect that type of traffic. It just becomes a risk all the way around. Again, emergency services, you can't get people in, you can't get people out, what do you do? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are well-aware of the gridlock there, and there is traffic everywhere in town though. And we do notice it bumper-to-bumper on Farquhar. It's been bumper-to-bumper on Old Route 15, Haynes Street, Hall Road. Traffic now is even getting off the 84 and turning and going down Mashpog to South Road in Southbridge. So, traffic is everywhere. Route 20 is bumper-to-bumper just about every day, and we will do what we can do. And I do have Ms. Englander's letter here. Says, "While I realize traffic all around Sturbridge is becoming a major issue, I believe the recent surge in holiday traffic I have seen on Farquhar Road, starting approximately three years ago, is becoming outrageous. Between 7:00 to 10:00, long weekends each year, the traffic will back up from Route 131, past the bridge, and almost all the way to River Road. It will remain like this for hours, making it near impossible for residents to use our road. I believe the cause of this traffic surge is due to Waze and other traffic apps taking drivers off 184, bypassing Route 15, and bringing them up our residential street. Since these apps use analytics to find the quickest route, it appears what should be done, more likely route for travelers, is ignored by the apps, likely due to the traffic light at Route 131. And yes, this is an annoying inconvenience for residents, but I also assert that it is a major safety concern for the town. These drivers treat the road like it is a one-way street, driving down the middle of the road, thereby blocking both lanes of traffic. Vehicles aren't moving and must block the one-lane bridge. If an emergency vehicle should happen to need to come on Farquhar, it will definitely be delayed. Additionally, the bridge has weight limits for trucks. The signs for these are located only at the bridge, which means that any truck that turns onto Farquhar but is overweight will not be able to turn around and is forced to travel over the bridge. On these busy travel weekends, we sit and watch numerous 18-wheelers and loaded tour buses on the road. We do not see a police presence on the road during these times. Farquhar is an inherently unsafe road to begin with. There are no sidewalks, the road is narrow and dark. People routinely drive way too fast on this road. The road currently has a number of children living on it who like to walk and ride bikes. In fact, my daughter and her friend were almost hit by a car walking along it just a few days ago. While this problem is mainly affecting residents of Farquhar now, as traffic continues to increase in this state, the problem will only get worse and spread to, excuse me, other areas of town. I believe while addressing this holiday traffic problem, solutions can be devised that will also help the overall safety of Farquhar. While I realize there is no way to eradicate this problem, I believe the only way to help mitigate the damage is to outsmart the traffic apps. If we can add a minute or two to the drive, the apps are more likely to keep the travelers on 184 where they belong and off Sturbridge's residential roads. Some of the methods I think will help, that will also help year-round include, put a traffic light at Route 131 in Farquhar. That's something that would be a state problem. Lower the speed limit to 15 miles per hour. In order to change the speed limit on roads, a study has to be done and approved by the state. Set up a police detail on heavy travel weekends to direct traffic at 131 and Farquhar Road. Post-signage stating local residents only. Move the weight limit signs for the bridge to the corners of River and 131. There are signs at 131 and Farquhar for the weight limits, and there are also signs down at the bottom of Farquhar and River with the weight limits listed, plus the ones at the bridge. Ban 18-wheelers and tour buses, except for local deliveries. Have a police presence on Farquhar on these weekends to ticket overweight trucks. Have a police, oh, sorry, that's it. Thank you for your consideration, Donna Englander. And Jeff, you have a letter from Waze.
Just a statement from Waze. Yeah, my comment was, what, you know, what can a town do? So, what they have is a series of volunteer managers that work with, that basically answer map issue questions. If you go on the app, you can report a map issue, and I just typed in, hey, this is so-and-so, and this is a problem. So, the answer I got back was, hello, I'm another one of the Massachusetts State Managers for Waze. We've discussed your request and done some research. Also finding and reviewing the Board of Selectmen meeting minutes to try to understand the problem and what you're trying to accomplish. M. Supernat suggested contacting GPS companies, asking them to change their truck routes. It sounds like a major focus is of commercial traffic, which may be a stress on the weight-limited bridge and infrastructure. First, we'd like to say that Waze respects all local traffic rules and laws within the capacity of the system. If the road you're referring to is officially signposted at both ends, is no-through traffic, we can make modifications to the roads to limit routing through that road. We can also restrict routing through those roads during certain hours, if signed as such. However, Waze doesn't have the capacity to disallow use of the road as an alternative to ID for congestion while allowing for its local use. It's either available, available for public use, or if signed to prohibit it, would be restricted to all users. Waze is not able to distinguish local passenger traffic from commuter cut-through traffic or from commercial trucks, buses, et cetera. The last two points I'd like to make are, Waze is only one of the many GPS navigation providers. While we do provide a human review factor to investigate and evaluate requests like yours, Waze services remain a fraction of the GPS-based routing, and we do not influence other routing systems. Changes to our system would not influence the other routing engines. It also, it did also sound like there was some local interest in running a traffic study for the town. And I personally advise against trying to change GPS routing at this time, as it could confound the outcomes of a study. To get an accurate assessment of the traffic situation, you should aim for an investigation of observed existing problems. Sorry for the inconvenience, and let us know if you have any questions or suggestions. If your town, town would like to sign and restrict the reference road segments, please let us know. We can be reached at an email, so forth and so on. Moreover, today, the DPW Director and the Police Chief were talking about Waze, and there are what's called super-users that you can register with Waze and somehow influence the outcomes? Is that?
Butch Jackson, DPW Director. I called the state traffic engineer today, and it so happens that the woman I was talking to was friendly with somebody from Mansfield where the Xfinity Center is, and they have, obviously, a lot of events down there. And every time they have an event, they have, basically what we have every time there's a holiday. So, they've somehow hooked in with Waze as a super-user so that this particular traffic officer can program in what streets he wants to be designated as closed during these events. So, nobody, people in Waze don't know that these roads are open, and Waze will route around these roads. We're working into it now, Chief Ford has the link. He's trying to get hooked in with it to see if we can do the same type of thing. It would be nice, the only, not real downfall, but, you know, the locals will still know where they can go. And people that have been up here before, you know, that have used that route may be able to use it. But it would stop anybody that's coming up, using Waze to get where they gotta go. It won't, it won't send them down that road if this all works out the way I was told it works out.
Okay, so, I think we have some suggestions, and I think with the DPW Director and the police talking and discussing, and with our town administrator, maybe there are some things that we can definitely put into the works so that it will alleviate it. Traffic will never be, traffic will never be less than what it is. Priscilla?
I'm gonna speak as a resident, I'm gonna step down from the seat. Priscilla Jimis, 38 Farquhar Road. I think one of, also the other concerns are this, that that bridge, a few years ago, was designated as needing to be replaced. This was before Mr. Jackson came, and there were three members of the board that were here at the time that know that that bridge is. And this was four or five years ago, when it did not have the capacity of the traffic it's holding right now. The other thing that is a safety issue in addition to Mrs. Peterson and what others have raised, I was walking down Blueberry Road one weekend when all these cars were blocked, and I saw a car come out from, past Blueberry, come onto the other side, and go up the other side of the road. Now, he was, he was going at a pretty good clip, but those who live on Farquhar also know that when they come down Farquhar, they're not crawling. And that was prime, I mean, I couldn't believe what I was seeing, because that was prime for a major head-on. And so, people get exasperated waiting, and so they try to go out this way. It's unsafe in every avenue, on every avenue. But, but my bigger concern also is, this isn't a commercial road. Tractor trailers, 18-wheelers should not be coming down, and Mr. Smith is right. I'll tell you, when they come down that road at night, they shake our house. They come down so quick, going down Farquhar, over that bridge, that if there is a car coming, God help anybody on the other side of that bridge, because it is one lane. And if you're not familiar with the area, and you're coming off of 84, you don't know that it's a one-lane bridge. So, I think we have a lot of pluses, that we can control this until we at least make our bridge safer. Every year, DPW ends up patching those guts that come out into that bridge. One of these days, somebody's gonna go down. And I'm not saying that that's gonna happen tomorrow, but there's a lot of reasons why that road can be closed, and it should be closed, to 18-wheelers. It isn't a commercial road, there's no commercial business on Farquhar, on any end of Farquhar. So, they, when we reroute them, that's certainly one consideration, as well as commercial buses. Truck, trucks that deliver furniture, oil, trash, obviously, they're oil, trash, obviously they're exempt. But 18-wheeler, heading to Stop &amp; Shop or heading to Shaw's, I don't see the need for that.
Okay, thank you, Priscilla. Mary?
I, I do think that we should, as a town, try to make this a priority for those residents that live there. We looked into this back when, with our interim Town Administrator, Ted, and I thought when he reviewed it, legally, if we have the traffic studies to back us, that Waze has to remove us, remove, he had a process laid out, and that's why we wanted to have traffic studies. Rather than appealing to Waze to willingly do it, I thought he looked into a process where they'd be legally required to do it if we did the traffic studies. I, I don't.
You're right.
I don't, I don't recall now.
We did have a traffic study done.
We did, we did, but then we needed, I guess, to have more than one, to have another one. So, I mean, I think that we do need to take action. There is traffic everywhere, Route 20, 131, but those are commercial roads. This is a residential neighborhood. And I don't think that, um, bridge, doesn't that have a maximum capacity of a certain amount? So the tractor, we should be able to, like, what can the board do now to, like, what is the process for us to make a motion to enforce the, you know, the weight limit on that road, or to prohibit? They shouldn't be on there anyway, correct? The tractor-trailers can't.
If they're empty, they're legal.
Oh, if they're empty, they're not going to be up there?
They don't have the.
Exactly how much the trucks can carry with them.
There's three different limits.
Yeah.
They're not, they're just, they're limited.
So if they're empty, they're probably going to be with it. Right, but if you're on the highways, if you notice, with the heavy tractor-trailers, they, they have weight. You know, if, if they are fined heavily, if their weight is exceeding their limit. So, you know, maybe it would be a deterrent in the meanwhile for us to have someone there, you know, on, on holidays and weekends and high-traffic times to, to wait, to, to see what their weight is.
I don't know if we have that equipment.
Oh.
And then restrict.
Yeah, there's a set of scales that's pretty sophisticated for 18-wheelers.
Well, I know, that's why, that's why I think, you know, Butch and the Police Chief have been working on it. I think with these suggestions, and with what they're looking into, and other things they could look into, maybe we can come to some things that will alleviate the problem. I mean, the, it is a residential street, but it is also a connector road, just like New Boston is a connector road. We have, um, 148 Arnold Road, connector roads. A lot of those roads have taken traffic from other communities and feeding in here. Farquhar's always been a feeder road from 84, in, in the old days, Route 15. But I think we can come up with some solutions, with people working together.
Do we have a timeframe? Do we have a timeframe? Like, can we say, like, give it towards a, a date, because I don't want to see a situation like another situation in town that's been going on forever that hasn't been resolved. I'd like to see if we could say, like, by such a date, we have at least a report that something's being done.
I would assume with the holidays and with budget coming up, I would say maybe a second meeting in February. Would that satisfy?
I don't know.
At least a pre.
Ask the resident, ask the resident. I'm saying it.
Well, hey, it's up to us to make this decision, Priscilla. No, could you please? First of all, this is a public meeting.
Yeah, but they're on the agenda.
I know.
They're on the agenda.
No, the two people that wrote and called. A public meeting means that you're allowed to be here and listen. A public hearing means that anybody can give input, okay?
They wrote the letter.
He didn't write the letter.
Mrs. Iglinger did.
Priscilla, I'm not going to argue with you, okay?
But I mean, if they speak, why can't they?
I know, but the one thing we don't want, and they don't want, is everybody reiterating the same thing, okay? We have a lot of, we have, we have a lot of input already with the letter, and we have, excuse me, okay, excuse me. We have people working on it already, okay? Okay, Mr. Not, I will let you speak.
I just have to, I'll, I'll ask after. I want to go back to Butch.
I just wanted to say thank you for addressing the issue, first of all. One thing that I'd like to say that wasn't in that suggestion, and I've read the, the town of Avril did this, it was a town in Los Angeles that did this, they reversed a street. They made it a one-way street, and that outsmarted the apps. The, the speed limit also outsmarts the app, because the app doesn't see that it is a quicker way. And at the minimum, I have never seen any police anywhere at Farquhar and 131. So when they're coming up, that, the problem is making that left on 131. I would love to see, at the very minimum, a immediate police presence at that corner to guide traffic. That would mitigate the problem.
Okay, we do, that has been suggested, and that's part of the discussion going on already, okay? Mary, you wanted to ask?
I want to follow up with Butch, but I also was going to comment that on holiday weekends at a minimum, we, we should have a police detail now there until the problems leave it. That's just my opinion. I mean, we have police detail on a regular basis on Farquhar, uh, Farquhar Road, on Fisk Hill, where it drops to 15 miles an hour at the Central Hill on a regular basis. They're not always there, but there's a speed trap there on a, on a regular basis. And given the amount of traffic that Farquhar is getting right now, they should, they should have a police presence there as well. But I just wanted to go back. So if we can, if we can be determined to be a super-user, Butch, we can have that road closed during holiday weekends? Or, I, I guess I didn't totally understand what kind of power that gives us, because it seems ideal. We can close the road to other than local traffic.
It doesn't close the road, it just tells Waze it's closed. That's, that's.
Okay, so, all right. And, and how, and how does it tell Waze it's closed?
Whoever is designated our super-user, whatever, probably a traffic cop from, whoever does the traffic for the police department, at least that's the way it was in Mansfield, he had, he was the user. So whenever he decided, or the Police Chief decided that they needed to have that road technically digitally closed, he could just do that from the app. He could do it from.
And how do we become a super-user? You're looking into that.
Yeah, Tommy Ford's looking for that now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought you don't.
We have, we have the link and everything. We're just going through the process.
Okay.
Jeff?
And that may help us with Waze, but people who have a static GPS that's not live, they'll still get that opportunity, and so will the other GPS live systems like Google Maps or one of the others. We'll just have to work through this process and see what we can do.
A lot of people use Waze.
While I'm up here, I wondered, how old is that traffic study? Is that relatively recent?
We did it last Memorial, last Memorial Weekend.
Okay, good.
Under 10.
Because you don't want to make any, like, somebody else said, you don't want to make any modifications before you do the study.
Right, because it skews it.
Yeah, it wasn't as intense as we had thought it was going to be.
But it did show more than normal.
It showed more than normal, and I thought we had agreed at that point that we were going to do a Fourth of July one, and then I, I don't know what happened with that. I thought we were going to do a, a follow-up. I'd have to look at the meeting then.
I thought we did the Fourth of July, not the Memorial, one of those.
We, we did Memorial Day Weekend, if I recall.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did Memorial Day Weekend.
So Butch, you'll continue working and taking these suggestions we got? Jeff?
Yes, I've got a bunch I like. Well, I don't know if you want to do a subcommittee or something to meet more often.
Yeah, we'll get the Safety Committee back together, and we'll do that as well as rewrite some of the traffic issues.
Kind of like the North Throughway signs, that's, that's an easy one. And the speed limit, I, I think Mary said something about that. She, she's absolutely right. We only have three roads in town that are under state regulation. That's 148, Brookfield Road, which is 148, Holland Road, and Fisk Hill. It's because they connect state-to-state roads, which I'm not really sure why Holland Road's on there, but it is. So the rest of them are not regulated by the state, but you still have to use their, their.
Method.
Yeah, whatever it is they use. You have to do a study, and they actually, what they said is, the speed limit is set by how fast people travel it. So you have to do a study how fast people are doing it in a normal passing, and that's how they set the speed limit. So you almost don't want to do that, because you're down at 30 now, and you're 20 at the bridge. So we could post that a little heavier, and at least we'd be down that low anyway. I don't want them to set a speed limit and find out it's higher.
Right, yeah, I know.
But it is a thickly settled, from the beginning of the road down to the bridge, it qualifies, because it's 200 feet between houses, and I checked on the GIS, and there's no one that's even close to 200 feet. So they're all fairly close. So at least that section, that first section is where all the houses are. That's, that's thickly settled.
Of course, and the trouble with the speed, the weight limit signs, people don't read them. People.
Yeah, they are, you're right. They are at the beginning of each side. Could move them maybe a little closer to the, to the main roads, and then they're again at the bridge, but, you know, they care. I mean, the guy needs to get somewhere, he's got to get there quick, you know.
Just like the people that go through the red lights.
But if we had a, but, but because the police on a regular basis are on Fisk Hill, right where it turns 20, around Whittamore, on a regular basis, and that's great, because a lot of people fly down Fisk Hill, too. But if we had a police presence occasionally issuing tickets where it hits 20, that could be a deterrent as well.
Yeah, that word would get out.
Yeah, but they also, no, they also do it on New Boston Road. They have also, at times, been on Farquhar Road at the, not the beginning, but.
And I also like the idea of, of maybe getting commercial traffic exempt from that road, or, or, you know.
So we've got, we've got a basket full of options that we'll just continue to pursue.
And we'll get a report.
First meeting in February, you'll have some status. Well, first, second. We'll, we'll keep working on it.
Sooner the better, but.
Of course.
You know, it's, it's a lot of hurdles to jump. Lynn?
Trailer truck issue. Something that might temporarily help is I've been into other neighborhoods where there are highway department signs that say residential neighborhood, trucks prohibited. Why can't we put one of those at each end of Farquhar Road? And also we need a dead-end sign for Blueberry Lane.
There is, somebody put one there.
Somebody made one.
Well, somebody here made one, but I think a real sign would be a good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, Butch just wrote that down.
I beg your pardon?
Butch just wrote it down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Lynn. Mr. Smith?
I don't, I don't think posting the upper end, and my, my upper end, I, yeah, it's going to help, but really, somehow on River Road, because once those vehicles start to turn onto Farquhar, they're trapped. So if, if you can park something, assign some type of notification as you're coming upriver.
Before it turns into Farquhar?
Before it turns into Farquhar. Another thing is, 15, or the old 15, is way more capable of handling, I mean, you said Farquhar's always been a through road. 15 is just right there. Like, it, it's actually a pain in the neck to avoid 15. Plus, 15 has a light where it junctions with, intersects with 131. So it's, it's a much more regulated flow of traffic.
Oh, that's true, but people don't go that way, because when they get off 84, they see it's bumper-to-bumper going up that way, and they figure, well, if they come across.
There was no traffic the other day.
There was absolutely no traffic the other day, because I actually got out of my road at a Blueberry, across the bridge, and went up 15.
The day after Thanksgiving Day or the day after, both of those intersections were packed, because I went out both of them, and I sat on Farquhar for 40 minutes, came back around, and then went up to one, the intersection right out here, and it was backed up past the public house.
Yeah.
Because 84 was a train wreck.
Yeah, there was one, there was one time when I went up 15 thinking I would get out by the light instead of trying to make the left, because left-hand turns out of any road in town is, you know, you sit there, you say, we need a traffic light. But anyways, I went up 15, and then near the end where the public house is, I saw all these cars coming out of the public house, and I said, gee, it's awful early for an event. It was too early for a wedding, for these people getting out. Well, what people were doing that were going up 15, they were cutting through the public house to get a head start on the tail end of 15.
So if you noticed, public house put two, I'm sorry, put two plow trucks.
That's because it's a private road.
So you couldn't get up there.
They can do what they want.
And, and I understand that. However, I mean, like you said, there's a ton of suggestions in there. It's just we.
Well, we have to get the right combination, and we have to be able to do what we would like to do.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Can I just say something briefly about, about the way these apps actually work? It's really not really based on the speed limit, but if you've ever noticed, if you're on Waze or Google Maps or MapQuest, and you're driving down the street, on your, on your GPS, it will say how fast you're going. Well, this information is being relayed back to, to the provider, and they, they're, they're, the app actually calculates the average speed of the corridor in which cars are passing. And that's the way they route it, because they know what the average speed is on 84, on Hayne Street, they know the average speed on, on Farquhar Road. So one way that it might be defeated is, if I lived on Farquhar Road, I'd, I'd take, put my cellphone on all three, three apps, and start it like I was going to Route 20 or something, or, and just not move.
But accidents.
Well, just kill.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no back and forth, please.
So that it looks to the app like there's no speed on, on Farquhar Road, like nobody's moving. And that will defeat the app.
We've all done that.
I don't think you can.
We've all done that on that.
It doesn't work. I, but I, I think we.
15 minutes, that's all you get.
I think we will.
It starts again.
There is a gate.
We will, we will, we will come to some.
Yep, there are gates.
Yeah, we will, excuse me, we will come to some conclusions that will hopefully alleviate it, but we need time to do it properly. Okay, so I thank you people for coming in, and you all have a nice holiday season with no traffic. Okay, okay, next on the agenda, we have an appeal of a water bill for 50 Farquhar Road.
Does he go?
Yeah, our vocal people. You can sit, Barbara, you don't have to stand.
So if you can just lead me in this, I'm not quite sure.
Um, well, just explain your situation, please.
So I got my water bill for the quarter dating July 2nd to October 2nd, and when I opened it, it was for $1,497 and some cents, which just about.
Flooded.
Gave me a, yeah. So I just started trying to think about how that was even possible, and looked back on my other bills, and I, bills are normally like between $190 and maybe $220 for a quarter. So I had the water company come out, and they checked, read the meter for the three months previous, and it showed a, a two-week span where I was using like 9,000 gallons a day, is what it was saying. So I asked them what I would do to appeal this, and I went to see Mr. Bridges. I sent him a letter with my explanation, which I really have no explanation, and went to see him, and he had a hearing with some, a certain board.
We had a staff meeting, yeah.
Yeah, and it was rejected. So my next step was to come and appeal the Board of Selectmen. So really, what I, I just have a letter that I had written to Mr. Bridges, because he asked for an explanation. So I don't know if you want me to read that, or...
Is it the same one you wrote back in October?
Yes.
They have.
Oh, good, oh, good, okay. So I have one neighbor next to me, and that's my brother. The dates for this was Aug- August 31st to September 13th. It was like a two-week period. And so it was asked, you know, would somebody fill a pool? No, he was actually taking down the pool, because I have grandchildren that live with me, and they were going back to school, and you know how the summer just winds down, so he had actually taken it off. I have two outside faucets, which if I was running 9,000 gallons a day, my cellar would be flooded. I don't have a hot tub, I don't have a pool. I just don't have an explanation, or I can even fathom how this kind of water flow could go through my plumbing, and I wouldn't know. I have a septic system, and the tank holds 1,500 gallons. Where would 125,000 gallons of water go in a two-week span? I don't, I have no explanation. So... of water go in a two-week span? I don't, I have no explanation. So I'm thinking the meter is faulty, and so I was told I could have the meter checked, which if my appeal is rejected again, I feel like I really have no choice because I've had nightmares thinking about my water is, my meter is going crazy. I've actually gotten up and gone down the cellar and checked it to make sure that it's not going crazy. I noticed no drop in water pressure. I don't know, what else to say. It's just, it makes no sense to me. It just isn't, doesn't seem like it could be a realistic event, that there has to be some kind of an error with that meter. So I don't, basically, I have no explanation because I can't even think. I've been living in that house my whole life, basically, except for a time span when I was raising a family and then I went back and took care of my parents. And it's been my house for over 20 years now, never had this issue. I just can't even imagine where the water would, that kind of water would go. It just doesn't seem like it could be a possibility to me. So I am appealing it, and basically that's, if you have any questions, you can ask me.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
After that period of 9/13.
Mm-hmm.
What was your bill after that, or your usage?
It's like, it just like spiked and then dropped. So one of my questions was, if I do have the meter checked and it's working properly now, would it even show that there was an error? I don't know if anybody can answer that for me.
Well, I had, is Shane here?
Shane's here.
Shane, um, there's reading each day given, right?
Yeah. Yes, that's correct with the data log. We provided both the graph and the daily usage in cubic feet through call response. I informed her how to convert that to gallons, and she's correct in that two-week span. That's about what she was using a day. But, and she doesn't have an explanation where it went. I don't know where it went. Our responsibility is to make sure that the meter's working properly. In my opinion, the meter is working properly. By regulation, she does have a right to have us come in, pull the meter out, send it to a third party to have it tested, and if it's found faulty, then she has a right to the abatement. If not, then she's going to get an extra $100 fee added to the bill and found responsible for this bill. And I'm just, I'm telling you in an effort to try and help you that in 27 years of doing this, I've never sent out a water meter and had it come back as over recording.
That's right.
And so, and I feel for you, but I hate to just, and I'll do whatever you wish because you have that right.
Right.
But I'm just telling you what's going to happen is I'm going to come in, I'm going to pull that meter out, I'm going to send it, the report's going to come back, and then we'll end up adding another $100 to your bill.
My thought is, is do I leave it there and possibly have this happen again? That's what I'm thinking. Because if I knew, if I even thought that I used this water, I would pay my bill. I wouldn't be here.
And I understand, I understand because, but we've all, you know, and you were the board and seen it before, people come here and they don't realize that they're using that water. And I, and I know to you it's unfathomable, but we've had people in here with bigger bills. It happens. And I can't say for sure what happened at your house, but in my experience and looking at the graph, I would have to say that a toilet stuck open. And I know that you're going to say that that's impossible, but I've been doing this for 27 years. I've seen it over and over and over again. And a meter, if a meter is going bad, it's not going to go bad and then just fix itself. If it's bad, it's bad. And a meter's a mechanical device, and like any other mechanical device, over time it wears and becomes less efficient. So I completely understand where you're coming from. I do because I've been doing this for a long time.
I did check the toilets, like your employee has.
And we checked, we checked when we went there, and she didn't have any leaking toilets, but that doesn't mean that at some point in the quarter that the clap valve didn't get stuck open. I've seen it before and we're going to see it again. So again, I feel for you. I understand completely where you're coming from, and I'm willing to come in and put a new meter for you, but I am just trying to tell you that what's going to end up happening is we're going to end up adding another $100 charge to your bill.
I would be willing to pay that just for some kind of peace of mind because, like I said, I have nightmares and I go downstairs and check this meter to make sure it's not going crazy.
Yeah, I've heard a couple of comments. I seem to remember in the past that we have checked other residents' meters and we have not charged them $100.
It's clearly stated, it's clearly stated in the regs, and we have charged them.
They've been charged, though?
Yes.
All right, but, okay. And second, I think we've replaced meters since I've been sitting on this board.
And we have.
I did have get one replaced.
She has that right. I'm willing to change the meter, but the regs.
Right, but I mean, if we change it, she's not going to be charged, right?
Well, so.
I mean, because, because, no, because I think this has happened before. We, our hands are tied in the sense, can I just finish talking?
Sure.
Our hands are tied in the sense that if the meter comes back, we've had other residents come forward with ridiculous bills in the, and a few times when we've determined that the town is also partially at fault, we've reached some kind of a compromise. You know, I think in one instance when the bill went out, we didn't give some kind of notice on the bill. I can't recall, but there have been a few times. Other than that, we've always upheld it because everybody else is going to end up paying for that. But I do believe for peace of mind's sake, we have replaced the meter at no charge to the resident because I've asked Greg Morris in the past, can a meter be, can it be faulty and malfunction periodically and not all the time? And he used to say, no, it's either an all or nothing thing. To me, that doesn't make sense. Any kind of machinery can malfunction sometime and not other times. So I personally would be in favor, this is just me, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
So can we just caution you on one thing, okay? So now we got a person that's complaining about a bill, and she has every right and she's gone through the proper channels and the proper steps. So every time someone comes in here and they're not happy with their meter, are we going to go out and change their meter for free?
Well, let me interject that I've been sitting on this board for about 10 years, and the amount of times that we have done that, I can count on one hand.
And I've been, and I've been working it for 13, and I don't remember changing any for free. So, but listen, I always do what this board wants. So I'll do whatever you want to do.
Well, what do we charge to change a meter?
We don't. Usually if the meter's, if the meter just goes bad on its own, which happens, say the meter just, the meter base stops working, we go in and replace it for free. But when it's a working meter, if someone is complaining.
Yeah, but so I'm asking, what would the charge be? Because we have replaced meters in the past.
I would have to, I would have to look at the.
They've been responsible for their bill, but we have replaced them because it is very unusual for that two-week period for it to be that bad. And I think that we have replaced meters.
I have three bathrooms and I have, you know, there's right now a number, I have grandchildren, I have, you know, it's a busy household.
I get it. I don't.
I can't imagine that one, a toilet got stuck for two weeks and was flowing almost seven gallons a minute, I believe is what you told me, for two weeks, and nobody, they get used.
Right, I just want to go back to this. I don't think we'll have a long line of people who are just going to come in and say they want a new meter. This does not happen a lot. And I guess, to me, I don't, I don't see the harm in replacing her meter.
Usually, usually the abatements we're asked for, it has been determined that it's the homeowner's fault. There has been a leak or they left a hose running for a long time. Now here, apparently both of you found no leak. Now I did look at Google and it says a leaking toilet can use as much as 200 gallons per day. Now, with the usage of 9,000, that's about 24 toilets you would have had leaking. I mean, there is something definitely wrong. I mean, this is an anomaly. I mean, it's, I, I don't know what the problem was, but if there was no leaking, no hose running, no faucet outside dripping or anything, you know, it's, it's strange.
Yeah, I, I would, I would tend to agree. It couldn't possibly be a toilet because a toilet doesn't use seven gallons a minute. But it could very well be a garden hose left open for two weeks. And in August and September, that's not.
I hear.
If it went through your septic system, it would have blown your septic system right out. So the most likely scenario would be somebody forgot a garden hose on for two weeks.
But there's no, there was no evidence anywhere of anything.
You would have seen 9,000 gallons of water in the yard.
My grandchildren are out there.
Yeah.
If you came and saw my yard, you would understand.
You would have had a natural swimming pool there.
Exactly.
I firmly believe.
Exactly. 125,000 gallons in two weeks, I would have a pool in my backyard or in my cellar.
Shane, doesn't this one strike you as really odd compared to others we've had?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't. I've seen it before. And like I said, I, and I understand what you're saying about the septic system. I understand what you're saying about the garden hose, but, you know, and I disagree with what you're saying about how many, you know, I've seen other Google things where a toilet can use four or 5,000 gallons a day. So I guess it depends on which article you're looking at. So, and in my experience, you know, the meter, you know, if you understand how the meter works, the meter can't move unless the water passes through it. It's that simple.
They're positive displacement meters.
And so in my opinion, and I can't explain, and I feel for, I really do. I can't explain where the water went. I really can't. But with, in my experience, if that meter registers and the water went through it, and that's based on, you know, doing this for 27 years.
Of course, on this, these readings now, don't we have something or shouldn't we have something when all of a sudden things start to spike like this to notify the owners?
If you had a different network where the readings were coming back to your main office on a 24/7 basis, which can be done, but we chose not to do that because it was going to be another half a million. So what we get right now, what happens is when we go out and read the meter, if they have a meter that's been running for 24 hours or more, at the time we read the meter, I get a report. And I, and the first thing I do when someone calls and says, hey, I think I got a problem, is look to see if they're on their report. Now, if they have a leak in the middle, in the middle of the quarter and it stops, and it's 24 hours before we read the meter again, that home is not going to show up on that leak detection report. So what you're asking, yes, can it be done? Yes, but we, that was a whole nother system and then, and off the top of my head, it was going to be roughly another $100 million, I mean, another $500,000. We would have had to put repeater huts on the tanks to bring the signals in back 24/7, and then you need someone staffed that's going to keep monitoring that on a daily basis, and you just didn't have that ability at that time.
Well, I just think this case is totally different than any of the others we've looked at. There's always been a reason why.
And I just, I just, I just want to go back to this. So a resident questions the reading because it's just an anomaly, and then we test it and we charge, you know.
We don't, so the first, so just.
So I know, but here's the thing. I mean, somebody's stuck between a rock and a hard place. I don't know if this is a policy the Board of Selectmen can, can oversee.
Can I just explain to you the policy?
But I didn't finish my point. I think that as a matter of right, a resident should be able to, when they have this kind of questionable reading, have a right to have it tested. If it comes back normal, I don't think they should be, I still don't think they should be charged with having, because then they're going to, it's, they're going to say, well, I don't know if I want to have it checked because I don't want to be charged if it comes back normal. I mean, I think when, when a reading is this bad, we should check it as a matter of course. And I guess you're saying by statute it's required or?
No, so just, just so I can walk you through the process. So if a person has a question about the bill, the first thing we do is we make an appointment with them, we go to their house.
Yeah.
We check the reading to make sure that the reading's right, which, you know, it's all done by computer, it's, it's never off now. And then what we do is we go one step further. We'll go in, we'll go into their house if they allow us to and they want us to, to look for leaks. And a lot of times you'd be surprised at what we find. It's a leaking toilet, this is your problem.
Right, I agree. They've come before us in those instances.
And then, and if we can't find anything, then, you know, I tell them, look, we couldn't find anything. You have, now, the bylaws are clear that if she wants to have the meter pulled out and tested, that we can do that. So if you're saying that you want those meters tested for free, then you need to change the bylaws. And I'm not against that either. You know, I'm just following what's in the bylaws.
I get it.
So I'm not, and I'm not opposed to it. I mean, I think a lot of times we help more people than you realize because we usually get to them and figure out what the problem is before it ends up here.
Right, so that reinforces our chair's argument that a lot of times some fault is found.
Right.
It's happened before with the hose and different things and they said.
And I also had another gentleman with the same exact problem. He went on vacation, he left his kids home alone. His water use for those three days while he was gone was through the roof. I mean, it was outrageous. But once we showed him the data log, it proved that, you know, the water went through the meter. And you're going to hear me say this every time we talk about this, that water meter does not move unless the water goes through it. It's a mechanical device. That's the way it's designed. So I'm willing to do whatever you, what you want to do here, but if you're going to, you know, if you don't, if you want the meters tested for free, then you should change your bylaws.
Yeah.
But Shane, it's just, it's absolutely astounding that on Friday, 8:30, there was 138 cubic feet usage. The very next day, it's up to 1,032, okay? And then for the next 13 days, it was high, high, high. The Friday, the 9th, September 13th rather, it was 1,176 cubic feet. Next day, it's down to 77.
And the gentleman I was just talking about, the same thing on his meter. The data log looked the same way. He's chugging along, he's using 40, 50 cubic feet a day, all of a sudden it goes through the roof, and then the next thing you know, it comes back down.
Yeah, and you mentioned three days. This whole thing transpired in 14 days. Now, I think Mrs. Martel, if there was any water running, she would have heard it, she would have seen it. I just, I am not going personally to vote to uphold the denial on this one because I think this is really different than the ones we've had before where there's been a cause found, either homeowner's fault or partial town fault. This, it's just out there. There's just no rhyme, no reason.
And just for the record, I understand what you're saying, but I can't tell you how many times I call the homeowner and I say, do you have a leak? They say, absolutely not. And we go there and a toilet's ripping away because they can't hear it.
You have found, you have found it, but you, that again reinforced, you didn't find anything in this case, right?
Nothing to say that it didn't leak for those two weeks.
No, but often, but often when you go, correct, you do find a problem.
90% of the time.
90%.
Shane, how many?
Going to give her the benefit of the doubt.
How many leaking toilets fix themselves?
I mean, I don't know, but I'm going to tell you, it's not uncommon for the chain to get hooked up. You know, you know how a toilet, you flush it, the chain, they bind together sometimes. It happens. So.
But 14 days worth of it.
Again, I'll do whatever, whatever this board wants me to do.
It's okay, Shane's, hold on a second, Shane.
Chase.
Chase has a question. No, I'm trying to.
So here's what I think, because I do think this is an anomaly. And what I, I think that we should, on a town's dime, pull their meter, get it tested, put a new meter on the house and see the result of the meter that's tested, that the test that's not on the meter that's on our house now. I mean, there's no way to live if you have nightmares of thinking about that meter. That, that's no way to live. You deserve to have your meter if you live in a test. And I would like to see the result if it was faulty or if that water did go through that meter and then we can cross that bridge.
Yeah, the only problem is I don't, it's working fine now. So if you haven't tested.
Well, I think what you're going to see too is when it's tested, it's not going to come back as recording at 100%. They don't. They, they lose efficiency instead of gaining efficiency.
Well, we.
I just, I just, I've tested a lot of meters, is my point, and I've never, ever seen one come back over recording. And so, again, I'll, I'll do whatever this board wishes. You just got to instruct me on what you want me to do.
Priscilla?
Uh-uh. I've sat on here and we've heard a lot of abatements come before us, and people swear that there was nothing wrong. And it ended up, in our time I've been here, we've not abated them. And so I agree with what Shane said. If we're going to change something and we need to change our policy and either be consistent or change things. I don't see this as any different than others that have come before us that had the same problem. There was one, if I recall, on Regent Lane that had two weeks, high amount of water, and it was even higher than this, and they were not there the full time and hadn't forgotten that they had left the outside water on or whatever. I, I just, I feel for the individual, like I feel for everyone who comes for an abatement. But I have to vote the way I voted before for consistency. You can't treat one abatement different than another.
The Regent Lane wasn't there for two weeks.
They weren't there.
Right, so they weren't.
She left her hose on. But, excuse me, Priscilla, I think we have to look at each individual case. That case has nothing to do with this. That case, there was a proven liability on the part of the homeowner. She left the hose running for two weeks. A neighbor actually saved her money because he finally went over and turned it off because the water was running down the lane. This one, there's no explanation. No one's found a leak. There was nothing running. This one, there's no explanation. No one's found a leak, there was nothing running outside, um.
Oh, it's not on vacation.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Okay, so I have a question then in regards to this. So what happens to the next person that comes for an abatement, and there is no leak, no identified leak, no nothing, and they, and they claim that nothing hap, they don't know why, or whatever, what are we going to do? We're going to do the same thing again?
Well, Priscilla, we would have to wait until the case came forward.
I know, but I've also heard from this board other times that we have to be consistent. I heard this when it came to abatements. I'm just telling you, I'm not going to support it, simply because of consistency. That's it.
That's fine.
Mike?
Yeah, I, I just want to say that, that I agree with Shane, that I have never, ever seen a water meter read high. If it, if, you know, the, if, if the meter says that that much water went through the meter, it went through the meter. Uh, some older meters will read low, uh, when they become worn, but they won't read high. I, I mean, this is, um, the, the, the evidence is overwhelming that that much water went through the meter. The only, you know, and it, the meter could be tested.
Where's the evidence?
There's no proof of it, there's no proof of it.
Where's the water?
This chart, based on the meter, but.
Well, that's the whole purpose I have in the chart. I mean, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, but, but there should be, there should be other evidence to back up this, like we've had in other cases. So, well.
What other evidence have we ever had to show that the water went through the meter, other than the?
Uh, we've had the water running outside, we've had the water running in the cellars.
Sure we've determined where the source of the water is.
You've determined where the water was discharged.
Correct.
I don't want to say every time, but that's my recollection.
You don't too.
Okay, so, any other questions, Shane, or Mrs. Martel? Is there someone that, um, we could, um, make a motion to deny, we could make a motion to abate, to what would be an average bill on her other days, her other months, her other years? Or we could abate the whole bill?
I'll make a, uh, Salkman Kavinsky suggested that we have the water test, the meter, and since the board, it seems like a substantial number of board members, feel that, that the meter should be tested, um, I would, I would make a motion, uh, saying that, uh, in this one instance, in this, I don't want to start a precedence, but in this one instance, because there is substantial question on some of the board members, that the water may have not gone through the meter, let's have the meter tested, and, uh, you know, at the town's expense, but if it comes back that, that the meter is accurate, I will believe the, uh, the, the, um, data that's presented here, um, on the meter.
Okay, so your motion then?
My motion is to have it tested, uh, at the expense of the town, and to, to continue this until, uh, we get the results of that testing. And I don't want to start a precedent by this motion, I just want, it's solely because of substantial, uh, concern of some of the board members, uh, that, that I would make this motion. If, if there was, if there wasn't this, uh, degree of concern by the board members, I would not, uh, agree to even have the, the, uh, meter tested at the expense of the town.
Second.
Okay, any more discussion?
I just have a question for the motion. If it comes back that the meter is fine, then what?
Well, he's.
Does she pay, is part of your motion, I think it is, but I wanted to be sure, part of your motion that she pays the bill?
Yeah, it's, that's not.
We would make a decision when we get the results.
But I, you know, I did state that I would, what my position would be if it comes back fine.
So.
But that's not part of my motion.
Yeah, I think it's cleaner to have separate motions, because we're all going to agree and disagree on different things, so.
Okay, but the motion is just to have the meter tested at the expense of the town.
Would you second it?
I second that, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Forty-one.
I have another, um, so, when we, um, have the meters read for our bills, I'm on town services too, I probably should know this, and we get, we get billed every three months.
Correct.
Um, every month, it's, it's read though, correct? Or is it only read every three months?
Every three months.
Okay, so, because it would, it, it would be goo, it would be beneficial for residents, even if it's their fault, they've left something running, if they're put on some kind of notice shy of the three months, so they can rectify the problem, they don't have a two thousand dollar bill. You know, if it was read monthly, then at, at least, someone would be put on notice, oh my gosh, what is wrong, rather than letting three months go by. That, that's a long time, if, if we can read the meter sooner than that, and, um, alert a homeowner, you know, look, your meter was way up, you better make sure nothing's going on, rather than having it go three months. Maybe that's something that we can discuss at a future time, or, or during our retreat, or something, but I do think that the sooner it's caught, even if it's the fault of the homeowner, it can, you know, maybe deter it being a two thousand dollar bill, which.
And I don't know what your contract requires from meter reading.
It's not, it's not so much a contract issue as, I mean, I can read the meters in eight hours, but who's going to, so the first problem is, we don't have contact information, phone numbers, emails for every customer. And the other problem is, what staff person is going to go through that report and reach out to all these people, and it's quite a substantial list, but a lot of places have ice makers, so the water runs twenty-four, seven. And, and you can get a copy of the list from, um, people downstairs, so you can look at it for yourself. I see it every quarter, and I use it when people call and say, I got a high bill, the first thing I do is look to see if they're on that list. She wasn't on that list, because when we read the meter, like I stated, the meter wasn't leaking at that time. So it's not, it's not, so, I have no problem reading the meters every month, but I don't have the staff, and I don't think you have the staff to analyze the report and take the time it, it, to reach out to every person. There's, there's a problem.
It's something that maybe we need to discuss. I don't know how much, you know, I, I get it, I get the staff problem. I don't know how much analysis is needed to just look and say, wow, this reading's way off the chart.
And I can get with Butch and Jeff too, you know, maybe we can send out a flyer. I mean, homeowners can check for themselves. I mean, there's a dial on the top of your meter, it's pretty simple, if that dial's spinning, there's water running in the house, so. If you're not running any water in the house, and you go downstairs and you open the cover, that dial shouldn't be moving. If that dial's moving, then there's water running in your house, so. Maybe we put out some kind of information packet or something like that to help people understand how they can check their own meters. Maybe we can do something like that.
That would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, it's, it's a good policy for homeowners to check their meter, uh, frequently.
Yeah, this one, when people call, I'll, while I'm on the phone with them sometimes, I'm like, can you go downstairs and see if, is there any water running in the house? No, they go downstairs, but the dial's spinning, and then that's usually when we go out, and ninety-five percent of the time, it's a toilet. So, let me get with Jeff and Butch, and we'll see if we can put some kind of information packet out to the customers, maybe include it in the next bill, which will be in January.
Okay, thank you, Shane. Barbara, thank you for coming in, and.
Thank you.
I have your phone number, and I'll call you tomorrow, make an appointment to change out the meter.
Okay.
Jeff, thank you for your time.
So, the next bill's in January. When, did you already do the meter reading for that bill?
No, we'll be reading on, um, January second.
Okay, thank you.
And then they go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, next on the agenda, we have a request for the approval of the head mechanic job description for the Department of Public Works. Okay, Jeff, you want to just?
Yep.
Quickly.
Part of the agreed-to collective bargaining agreement between the town and the union at DPW was the creation of the head mechanic position, which would equate on their pay scale to crew leader, which is the top of the union pay scale. Um, that was agreed to in the contract, the town approved the contract, so now we have to create the job description. The personnel committee has approved the job description, recommend it to you. If you approve it this evening, we can post, uh, for that job and get it filled.
Okay, any questions on it?
This is not an additional position, it is just a, another grade or another title in the, in the union.
Is there, is there another position, it's called Equipment Operator Mechanic?
Yes.
Okay, and will that, that'll be filled as well, right? I mean.
We currently have two Equipment Operator Mechanics, we just want to promote one of them to, so there's no extra positions, it's just a promotion for one of them.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Is there a motion then to approve the job description?
I move that we approve the, uh, job description for Equipment Operator Head Mechanic.
Do a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, five to nothing. Okay, next we have a letter of resignation. Okay. Let's see, Ramona Brunel, Ramonita, sorry, Brunel, has submitted her resignation as a part-time dispatcher with the Sturbridge Police Department. Staff is recommending it be accepted. She says, good morning, after much thought and consideration, I have made the decision to discontinue training for dispatch position with the Sturbridge Police and Fire Department, effective on this date. I want to thank you for the opportunity and experiences that I will take away respectfully, Nita Brunel. Okay, is there a motion to accept the resignation?
So moved, with regret.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, next we have a request to accept the purchase and sale agreement for 501 Main Street, to be used as a public parking lot. Any questions?
I know.
Jeff?
As I stated in my report, there is a revised one. Actually, there's one with all the editing turned on, on your, on, in your packet, or in, on the dais this evening. Um, there were two corrections that KP Law made, from the one that was in your packet, section twelve, the words on page.
Three.
Three, the words conveyance practice were added to the end of the, end of the sentence in section twelve. And then on page four of nine, in the first full paragraph C, alternate of occupants, it should say or occupants, which was corrected. Um, the owner has signed it, so this is, uh, this is good to go if you're okay with it.
Okay, any questions, comments?
Do we, this, I thought we were going to, uh, town, a special town meeting with this.
We are.
We have to, after our vote. It'll be a warrant out of.
Mm-hmm.
So, wouldn't approval of this come after town meeting?
Good point. Well, we need, we need to show the owner a commitment, that we're committed to buying it, in, subject to approval at town meeting.
Yeah, remember that had been, that had been the motion.
And it's been advertised in all the, in the, you know, compas and, uh.
Well, we did an RFP for property.
Yes, it all went through KP?
Yeah.
Are you soaking your head that it didn't?
Oh, I did.
Oh, oh, okay, I did, I did, she's blurry eyed.
Yes, Attorney Sharon Everett worked on this for us.
Okay, then is there a motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept the RFP.
Well, it's the purchase.
Purchase and sale agreement for 501.
Is there any paragraph that says, um, or, or an addendum that says it is subject to approval at town meeting?
There should be, it's.
I, I assumed it was.
I didn't see anything that.
If I could add, that's my motion.
It, it's typically, like a rider, or, or some kind of addendum.
Doesn't say subject to appropriation, so we're tied to it.
I mean, I, I think it should say that.
Well, only if our motion doesn't include it, if our motion includes it.
Well, I think the actual contract should include it.
There was a section in here.
I, I'm, yeah, that's what I thought, but I'm just not finding it now.
Yes, it's section fourteen B at the top of page four. Buyer obtaining a favorable vote.
Yes, thank you.
Of Sturbridge Town Meeting, authorizing the acquisition of the premises.
You see it?
And it's buyer, it's under buyer's contingencies.
One more page.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I will second Chase's motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Three to two.
I have a request. Are we getting ready to move into the host's discussion?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, I thought that we were going to get another copy of the agreements. I didn't bring them, and so, I can't go, I, I was hoping, Samantha, we could take a five-minute break and maybe make copies of them again.
Up to you.
Um, I don't know who else didn't bring them, but.
I didn't either.
Yeah, we didn't, because I had said I want them all separate, you know, and I just assumed we were getting another copy, because I don't have my comments, I don't have it with me.
I don't either.
Yeah, no.
It's what you gave us, um.
Yeah, we'd have to.
The extra what? From last meeting? Yeah, just got copies of each of the three agreements separately.
All right, so if we can take a ten-minute and make some copies?
Thank you. Seems so late.
I know, it's crazy, it's only eight-ten, I'm like.
I should do the warrants, kind of. I don't either. So, um, in order to make sure we fully understood the, the goals and the desires of the board, we thought we'd use this meeting to clarify any issues, and make sure we understood the language you wished inserted into the agreement, and that way we could get them redrafted and sent back to the applicants for possible action in the first meeting in January. So Nicole's here this evening to go over, uh, what she took away from the comments at the meeting. She's watched it online, but, uh, we want to make sure that we understand exactly what you're looking for.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, she's prepared a memo that kind of will start the conversation.
Okay, does everyone have that?
So the first thing that I just wanted to go over is the difference between a community impact fee and a community benefit payment. I think there was some confusion about the two before. The community impact fee is a statutory fee. It's in ninety-four G, section three, which is the statute that regulates adult-use marijuana. Um, it allows for an up to three percent community impact fee that's calculated. It's three percent of the gross sales of the marijuana establishment. And it's not meant to be a revenue-generating fee, it's meant to reimburse the town for any impacts that are associated with the establishment itself. That is for a term of five years, that, um, and that's, again, set by statute, in our opinion, it is subject to renegotiation. Um, things that the community impact fee can be used for are impact to, impacts to roads, if you have a road that hasn't been heavily traveled, and because of the marijuana establishment, you see, um, more traffic, so you have potholes and repairs to the road, um, for drug awareness programs, for police patrols and police training programs. Those are all things that could be, um, recuperated through a community impact fee, payments, the community impact, um, excuse me, community impact fee. A community impact fee goes to the general fund, and the town can then use that monies again to address the impacts of marijuana establishment. The town does by statute have to document and record those, um, impacts, and in my opinion, the town's ability to renegotiate a community impact fee will be directly related to how well it's able to document its expenses. In comparison, a community benefit payment is something that is in addition to a community impact fee, and, and separate and aside from it. Um, it is not a creature of statute. In our opinion, the marijuana statute sets a floor, it doesn't set a ceiling, and, um, the town can negotiate this agreement as it can any other agreements. Um, all agreements are subject to negotiation by willing participants. The CCC recently, um, did a study, and most of the host community agreements that were reviewed by the CCC had additional payments. by the CCC had additional payments in the form of benefit payments, charitable contributions, and other items that weren't specifically addressed in the statute. For example, if you have a cultivation facility, there is language in some host community agreements that address, addresses water usage, energy usage. Those aren't things that are specifically set by the statute, but in our opinion, it's something that the town can do under its general contract, contracting authority with the willing applicant. I will again caution the town, as I'm sure that everyone has seen in the news and has, and as some of the applicants have stated, these host community agreements are subject to a high level of scrutiny right now, because there has been some news publications that some municipalities are abusing their, their power in negotiating these agreements. I will say that there has not been a challenge, as far as I'm aware of, to these, these types of additional provisions in a host community agreement. That being said, it would be a case of first impression. Our firm does believe that these agreements are negotiated with willing parties, and again, that the statute sets a floor and not a ceiling, and that the town could reasonably negotiate for additional provisions aside from a community impact payment. The structure of a community benefit payment that's similar to the way a community impact fee is, in other words, having a community benefit payment tied to gross sales could arguably give an impression that it is a higher community impact fee than allows by the statute, and could be subject to stricter scrutiny. But again, that is up to the town to determine how it would like to negotiate these agreements in its, you know, discretion, it's a business and policy decision, and again, in our opinion, within the town's general contracting power to reasonably negotiate these agreements. The next thing that I think there was some confusion on was about the laws governing conversion of medical facilities to marijuana establishments. And when I say marijuana establishments, I mean adult-use recreational establishments. The marijuana law, again, chapter 94G, section three specifically addresses conversion, and the law provides that zoning ordinances and bylaws cannot prevent the conversion of a medical marijuana treatment center licensed or registered not later than July 1, 2017, engage in cultivation, manufacture, or sale of marijuana or marijuana products to a marijuana establishment engaged in the same type of activity under the statute. So in this case, the town has adopted a zoning bylaw that limits the number of marijuana retailers that can locate in town to two. The conversion provision of the statute means that if the town has two marijuana retail establishments already located in town, and you have a qualifying medical marijuana treatment center that's seeking to convert, the bylaw cannot operate to prevent that conversion. And again, that's in chapter 94G, section three. I would note that there was some submission by the applicants about, about medical marijuana treatment centers that are applying for marijuana establishments licenses at the CCC level, and about their priority status as applicants. That is different than a conversion and what the town can and can't prevent pursuant to the statute for conversion. Does the board have any questions so far?
Yeah, I, I have a question. The, the conversion has to be the same entity. It, it can't be converting from one entity to another business entity.
The conversion would be from a, an entity that has a licensed medical marijuana treatment center license, converting seeking to have a marijuana establishment license to operate an adult-use recreational marijuana establishment. The laws on conversion aren't entirely clear. The CCC doesn't have much guidance about conversion. The term conversion itself isn't defined anywhere in the law. In our opinion, it, it is arguably tied to, to an entity. So if you have an entity that's made up of the same directors, there is a, arguments to be made that, that is one establishment.
Okay, so it could be one establishment with two different names, or two different incorporations that, types. One a nonprofit and another one for-profit corporation.
Seeking, seeking to, seeking...
It would be one, one establishment.
Well, when you apply to the CCC, you apply as an entity. So it would have to be that entity seeking to convert. I think the question...
Okay. Yeah.
Can I answer this question a little bit? So I think what she's getting at is in the last paragraph on page three...
Yeah.
And then followed up by the next paragraph on the next page. In other words, we'll just put names on it because our medical establishment is Heal.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, we could make the argument that it's one legal entity, so if we granted a license to Heal Sturbridge, Heal, Inc., couldn't convert because they're one entity, we could make that argument. But there's no guarantee absent their language agreeing to it. So right now, what's very relevant to me is where she says accordingly, there's no guarantee that Heal, Inc., would be prohibiting, would be, should be prohibited from converting, even if Heal Sturbridge was granted an HCA. So there's no guaran, there's no guarantee there. Personally, I, I'm in favor of what's on page four, where, right in the host agreement, Heal, Inc., let's just assume Heal Sturbridge was granted a license. I would want to see language from Heal, Inc., agreeing that they would relinquish forever any statutory right they have to convert by virtue of the fact that Heal Sturbridge was granted a license, and I think that can be done contractually if I read your memorandum correctly.
I, I believe it could be, in my opinion, yes. And, and Mr. Supranaut, maybe to get back to your question, you know, or, or going back maybe to the heart of your question, I should say, it's whether Heal, Inc., can, can convert. I think there was some confusion about the application that was received by the board for a, for a retail establishment. The application was from an entity named Heal Sturbridge, Inc., which is separate and distinct from Heal, Inc., which is the operator that the town had executed a host community agreement with. So, we're not, the board is not considering an application from Heal, Inc...
Yeah.
...to engage in recreational retail sales. The board isn't considering a conversion, and I think there might have been some confusion with the applicants as well as to the entity that might have been before the board and whether they were entitled to a license purely on the basis of conversion. Heal Sturbridge, Inc., in my opinion, doesn't have any conversion protection, let's say. It's, it would have been Heal, Inc., that would be able to convert, and that's not an application that is before the board. However, counsel for Heal Sturbridge and Heal, Inc., is, is the same, and she has represented that they are organizations that have the same parents, corporation, and that if Heal Sturbridge, Inc., was not granted a host community agreement, that Heal, Inc., would seek to convert in the future. Now, Heal, Inc.'s medical HCA does have a provision which prohibits them from converting until July 18, 2021. So there is no guarantee that Heal, Inc., will ever seek to convert. There's also no guarantee that they won't. What I understand to be the case is that counsel for Heal, Inc., has suggested that if a host community agreement was awarded to Heal Sturbridge, Inc., Sturbridge, Inc., as the medical entity, would be agreeable to amending that provision in their medical HCA, to rather than have a time limitation on conversion, for it to be a prohibition on conversion.
It's very, it's, it's really, very simple, right? You know, if Heal is given a license under Heal Sturbridge, there's no Heal, Inc. license. We're not gonna, personally, I am not going to vote in favor of two licenses for Heal, one now and one in the event they want to convert. So we'd have to come up with language that would, you know, do away with any possible argument that they're two separate legal entities, and Heal Sturbridge got a permit, a license, and now Heal, Inc., in two years, under their host agreement, has a right to convert. For me, sitting here, I would want language which makes crystal clear that Heal, if they are awarded it now, that's it, they get one license. That's where I'm coming from. So I want to do whatever we have to do in the negotiations process to see that that's the case.
I do believe that if both Heal, Inc. and Heal Sturbridge are agreeable, when the board, when the board does sit again to review the agreements, we could put forward to, to amend, well, an amendment to the medical HCA, and I can work with counsel for Heal, Inc., to come up with that language, and you can also look at the Heal Sturbridge, Inc. proposed agreement. This way, the board can have both of them at the same time. If it does choose to grant an HCA to Heal Sturbridge, Inc., you can sign the amendment and the HCA at the same, the, the new HCA with Heal Sturbridge, Inc., at the same time.
I would be in favor of that approach. Chase?
I have a question on something. To the CCC, is it under scrutiny when it's tied to gross sales?
In general, host community agreements are under scrutiny. If you type them in, into Google, you'll see a whole host of articles about the globe. The community benefit payments, if you have them structured in a similar way as to a community impact fee, in my opinion, they may be subject to higher scrutiny, just because it is arguably that they can give the appearance of being a community impact fee higher than the 3%.
Because we had one agreement that was tied to that.
Yeah, and I, oh, go ahead. And I had, I was the one that expressed, you know, comparing the different ones on the benefit program that I preferred Heal, that did tie it in. However, I was not privy to the opinion that it would raise more scrutiny because it was tied to a percentage of sales. I guess where I'm coming from now, then, is that flat 15,000 at the other two, I will say for the record, I was underwhelmed by, by that. And I guess I would ask you, what was the range? And I think I've asked this before of KP, of, you know, I, I certainly don't want to be into scrutiny, I'm not asking, you know, for performing arts center, that would definitely be overturned by the courts. At the same time, 15,000, where does that fall on the spectrum of what applicants are offering by way of community benefit payments? Because I feel like Sturbridge is in a unique situation that a lot of small towns are not, and I hope KP is, is cognizant of that. We represent a lot more of the same problems that a city would have. You heard it here, by ways diverting, we have one of the busiest interchanges of the Mass Pike anywhere, probably rivaling when you get off in Newton to go to B.C. or all the way into the city. Our exchange is always packed. We are the access to 84 and New York City, and I can't tell you how many people say, "Oh, Sturbridge, that's where it's really bad, the traffic." And so, I feel like our traffic problems is going to be greater than some of these other small towns. And if other small towns were granted 15,000 by, in negotiations, I don't think that is appropriate or for our demographics and our situation, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels. That's why I prefer Heal when they tied it in to a profit, because clearly, if you tie it in, it's gonna, it's gonna end up, these are gonna be million-dollar retail stores, it's gonna be more than 15,000. I don't want to have stricter scrutiny, but I, I question whether 15,000 is, is, is appropriate. So I'm asking you, what is the range that you have seen? Without naming what community it is, what is the low that you have seen with community benefit payments, and what is the high that you have seen?
So you still, excuse me, there still is a community impact...
I, I get, I know the distinction, with all due respect.
Sure.
I'm focusing on the community benefit payments, because I know you said the CCC studied it, and more than 90% have a community benefit payment as well...
Well...
...for beautification or whatever.
Sure.
And I'm asking, what is the range of the amount of money that a municipality or a city has seen? Is it a low of 5,000 to a maximum of 25,000? Is it 10,000 to 30,000? I guess I'm asking you based on, because that's, you know, one of the reasons we have KP is because you represent all these municipalities, and you come with this wealth of experience and knowledge. I'd like to know, what is the range? I want to know where the 15,000 falls compared to other communities.
Sure, so if I could just say one thing, and just maybe correct any imperception, these CCC studies were on host community agreements as a whole, and the CCC, I'm not aware if they specifically focused on benefit payments. What, what I was saying was that the CCC, when they looked at these host community agreements, they included other provisions aside from the community impact fee, majority of those agreements. So whether it be a benefit payment, a charitable contribution, volunteer hours, that was what I was saying. I, I don't want to give the impression that the CCC focused specifically on that...
No, no, I took it, I have, that you said CCC reviewed, and a majority have community benefit programs. I, don't those all fall under that big umbrella, whether it's beautification, or charity, or community service? That all falls under the umbrella...
Yes.
...of a community benefit program, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so again, I'm asking, like, what is the range? Without tying it into a percentage, which I guess would look like a pseudo-impact fee, which would be statutorily not allowed, because 3% is the maximum.
And again, I, I'm not saying that it would be statutorily less allowed...
It would just be subject to strict scrutiny.
It might be, you might have more press on...
Right. Okay, so what I'm asking is what is the range of payments that you have seen in host agreements to date? What is the low and what is the high? Because I'm trying to determine where the 15,000 falls with respect to other host agreements that have already been negotiated in other towns and cities.
Understood. I haven't reviewed every single host community agreement that's come through KP's doors. I will say that I've, the ones that I've seen, some have had no community benefit payment in them, some have had simply charitable contributions, some have had, you know, no additional monetary figures and simply volunteer hours. Each agreement is very different based on the size of the establishment, whether it's retail, whether it's a cultivation facility, and, you know, the size...
I'm asking for retail, just retail.
The size. So again, I, I don't have, you know, a max number that I've, I've seen. I can tell you that I've seen some tied to percentages and some tied to blanket fees. I've seen some with none, some with five, some with 10. I've seen some with 25 and some tied to a percentage. But again, all of those are, I think, have to be taken in relation to the type of facility, the size of facility, and the community that they're in.
Right, well, I guess, I mean, for me, if, if, if we could, because now I'm hearing five up to 25, I guess I would like KP to look and, and to give us some kind of what, what the range, what the range is. I guess I would like to know, to have that figure. And I know some are charitable contributions, again, what is the figure? I want to know where Sturbridge falls with respect to that. I don't think that's an unreasonable thing. In fact, I think a few months ago, when we wanted to see sample host agreements, because, again, I was underwhelmed by that amount of donation, but again, if that's the norm, I don't know, I'm not the expert in this area, but I guess I would like, I would like to, if you are able to check, say, 20 of your... I would like, I would like to, if you are able to check, say, 20 of your host agreements, can't take more than 15 minutes, zip, zip, zip. I just want to know, what is the, what is the range? It's as low as five and as high as 25, from what I, what I understood.
Hey, Jeff?
And the actual amounts were not subject to Nicole's approval or disapproval. I looked at the amounts, and my goal was to have a diversified set of host community benefits, whether it be hours, charitable contributions, direct support to different things, that were put forth by the companies that weren't going to be considered abusive or exorbitant.
I understand, but some, some of determining whether something is exorbitant is a comparison to other host agreements that have already been in effect. I mean, we're not looking at it in a vacuum. That's what I'm trying to say.
Also, I didn't go back and say that wasn't enough. That's, that's...
So it wasn't, it was...
There was some give and take on some of the things, but when it came to like dollars, we were more like, this is kind of what we're looking at. What number do you want to put here to do X?
Okay, that's fine. And I'm just asking, where does that fall in relation to other host agreements that have already negotiated? I mean, I don't know what else to say, because I'd like to be able to compare it. Because, you know, where there were instances, I was like, well, you know, training one police officer, to me, that was not a lot. And to their credit, all the applicants said, we agree, we'll train more than one. So I, hold on, so I don't know how much there was, they all seemed will, much, they all seemed extremely willing to train more than one officer. All three of them did. Certainly, two out of three. So I, I guess, I'm curious why it didn't end up negotiating that way.
Because that's what the host impact fee is for. If we don't show, we're using the host impact fee for reasonable mitigations...
But those were listed, hold on, that wasn't listed.
I know, I know.
Well, then, the contract was that...
Wait, wait, let me finish, please. I understand, and in one section of the contract, there are training in officer.
And it's not in the community impact, it's not in the 3%, it's in a whole different part of the contract.
And I understand that. But the, the 3% is for training the rest of the police force, the 3% is for buying Narcan, the 3% is for paramedic services, the 3% is for the dare officer. All these things that we can use that 3% for, if we are going to shift away from the 3% to a direct allocation in a community benefit fee, we're not going to be able to justify the 3%.
Well, then, why is it listed in a different part of the contract?
Because they offered it.
I, I can, I can also address that as well. So maybe some of the confusion, confusion here is the language about offsetting the cost of certain things. So you get the, the impact fee, it comes annually, once a year. So there are provisions in here that allow for the company to pay for certain things upfront, to reimburse the town for immediate expenses, and then that will be offset against the community impact fee. That's not to say that once you receive your annual community impact fee, that you can't use those funds for other purposes. This is just to say that if the police chief right now has a program to train an officer, there are not funds right now available, the company will provide that payment upfront, and then at the end of the year, when it's time for the annual payments that, to be submitted to the town in totality, that the fees, the costs of certain items, including the police officer training, will be offset against whatever is owed in the community impact fee. Does that clarify things?
Well, I mean, yes and no. All I know is, it's not an additional payment, then. The police officer training is just part of the 3%, so it shouldn't even be listed on page four as an additional payment, because it isn't. It's coming out of the 3% from my understanding.
But you're getting it before the, you, you could get it before the 3% impact fee payment. It's an upfront payment.
It's just a construct of the contract. We can look at how it's organized.
Okay, well, I guess I'll save for the record. Company shall reimburse the town for the actual cost incurred for a police officer to complete advanced roadside impairment driving, provided that any upfront payment shall be offset against the annual payment of 3%. Why is it one police officer?
It's, these are subject to negotiation if the board wants to increase that amount.
That is woefully, that is woefully not enough.
That same pot of money is going to train them all. It just so happens that that specifies that they're going to train one upfront, and the rest of it will train with the other rest of the funds.
Well, I think we need to train more than one upfront, then.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to say.
And, and that's subject to negotiation. If the board would like that, if the applicants are willing, we can certainly amend that provision.
Yes. There was an expectation to train them all.
I would think, yeah, absolutely.
Right.
But...
I'm not sure that they would all be in training at the same time. However, again, this is a policy and business determination for the board to meet with willing parties to negotiate the agreements, and if the board and the parties are amenable to it, we can change that language.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of going through this at, at my job with the casino in Springfield. We're at first-year review, and like, I'm having to prove that, that because the GPS shows people taking a different route to get to the casino, now we have to make improvements to certain local streets and that sort of thing. But there's nothing in any of these agreements that, that I saw that would reimburse the town, say, if we had to make improvements to local streets, could we use some of this 3% for that? It, it's not really specific enough in these agreements, for me.
Sure. So the community impact fee is meant to reimburse the town for those impacts. If it's a way that is being traveled more heavily, and you can associate it because of the locating of a marijuana establishment in town, in my opinion, you can use the community impact fee to reimburse the town for cost of repairing that way.
Mm-hmm. So, does it have to be spelled out in the host agreement, or can it just be negotiated, like after your first-year review or whatever?
So the town will have to document its, its costs, and by documenting its costs, when it's time to renegotiate the community impact fee, that's how you'll determine, you know, whether it should be a 3% fee again, or something less than that, but the money would go...
But that's a five-year review, isn't it?
I'm sorry?
For that, to renegotiate the community impact fee, that's after five years. You don't renegotiate that in year one.
Right.
So the way that it's structured in the...
But you can, we should be able to get some money back in year, after year one.
You're going to get 3% every year for five years and use it to mitigate impacts.
Okay.
And then at the end of that five years, you're going to sit down with the applicant and say, we want another 3% because we're doing this, 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 and this is happening.
And you've got it documented.
Right.
So, we're very specific about training police and stuff like that, but we don't mention other, other things.
And again, those are for upfront costs. The community impact fee could be used for whatever impacts the town has that are associated with the sighting of these establishments in town.
I have also some questions on community support. We've got a wide range of proposals for community support, some of which may or may not be legal anymore. And I, you know, I, you know, like discounts, for example, are those totally out of the, I mean, to encourage, you know, local businesses and promote local businesses? In, in one of the agreements, there was some discounts offered, for example.
Yeah.
Is that totally off the wall now, or out of the question?
Sure. There's qualifying language that we put in the agreements, and the qualifying language is that, to the extent such practice and implementation are consistent with federal, state, and municipal laws and regulations. The company, and in this case, it was caregiver-patient, agreed to some of these discounts and donations that they were offering. And we put that language in there because the CCC does have some regulations that do address marketing and advertising, and specifically, one of the sections state that it's prohibited to advertise, market, and brand certain identified promotional items as determined by the commission. Included but not limited to gifts, gives away, gives away, excuse me, giveaways, discounts, point-based reward systems, customer loyalty programs, coupons, or free or donated marijuana. So if the CCC determines that certain items can't be discounted, then of course, the town can't enforce that provision of the agreement. However, if the CCC says you can have a discounted T-shirt, then that provision of the host community agreement would stand. There's also a provision in here that says advertising, marketing, and branding at or in connection with a charitable sporting or similar event is prohibited unless 85% of the audience is reasonably expected to be 25, excuse me, 21 years of age or older, as determined by reliable current audience or composition data. So again, it seems that the CCC needs to put out some more guidance as to that. What caregiver was saying is, if they can, if they're allowed to do this under state laws and regulations, this is something that they would like to do, and that was something that was offered by caregiver in their proposal. It isn't something that KP put in the agreement, or that the town put in the agreement.
Can I comment on...
Oh, absolutely. That's, I threw it out there for discussion.
Okay, so, after I went back myself and looked at the statute and read that as well, I personally, for the, for the second round of negotiations on these host agreements, to me, that is more of a red herring than tying a community benefit program to a percentage. I am not in favor. To me, that, that's a clear discount. And so I, I, I personally am not in favor of having that in, in the agreement, because I think it can bring into more scrutiny our entire agreement. I would like to maybe go back. I think the applicants are very willing to work with us, they're professionals, and I, I would like to see what else they would do in terms of community support programs, or more charities, or that type of thing, because as soon as I heard that, it didn't sit right with me when I heard about a discount on the cost of cannabis if you go to our stores. I mean, and I know it was meant in good faith, but after I read that, I said, to me, that's going to be questioned. So I'd like to see what else caregivers, I, I'd like to negotiate that out, but I can't speak for the rest of the board.
Of course.
But I'd rather see something else done, or a flat fee, the 15,000 increase perhaps, so we can have more beautification. We, we need that in our town. If caregiver goes and is given one of the licenses, the entry right into town is an area that we really were trying to beautify even before they were interested. It's a real eyesore that they, they would take over. There's three islands there that is in need of beautification, but in terms of a discount on the cannabis cost, I, I'm not on board with that, once I read what the CCC says.
Of course.
And I wouldn't...
And if the board feels that way, we could certainly strike that language.
I don't know. I can, I guess I want to know what the rest of the board feels, but I would like to see them do something else. And I also, you know, I, I noticed that we have stuff like education on public health and stuff, community support, municipal-sponsored educational programs on public health and drug abuse prevention. What about a program on addiction to help those? Because that's a negative externality that's associated with, not just that, alcohol too, but I guess I've read one in 10 are, are at risk of becoming addicted to cannabis. So I want to know what we can do in that area. Because I know, like, with gambling, with the casinos, they've earmarked money for gambling addiction into their agreements. And I wonder, it seems like a very similar kind of thing, that it could be abused.
We can take a look at that to see that that's addressed somewhere, whether it be in the benefit fee or the impact fee. Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
On the benefit fee, and looking at the three agreements, I, I understand there is, two of them have things that add up to $15,000, but in total, one of them is offering 25,000 in total.
Now, but initially, it was 15, I believe.
Well, it's from the last go-round. This is the spreadsheet I gave you last time around. So one's at 25, the other one's at 5, and then another .0025 of gross sales, and then the third one's at $40,000. So I understand what you're saying. We'll put your, your chart together, but I just...
I just want to know where, I just want to know where we fall in the range.
And I would just like to say for the board, too, that I would caution the board against looking solely at what other communities received in a monetary amount for a community benefit payment, because some communities have asked for other things. Some communities have said that, you know, we're not going to ask for a community impact fee at all, and all we want is a community benefit payment. So looking at the range of community benefit payments in isolation, I don't think fully would inform the board of the host community agreements and what other municipalities have negotiated for, because there are a whole host of other provisions in those agreements.
That is so fair, but it, it would be one aspect only.
Yeah.
Mike?
Again, going back to the community support section, one of the things that the town had a study done a couple of years ago was to have a trolley or system where people could get from hotels to different venues in town, and it was deemed not quite economically feasible for the town to do that. Would that be a legitimate community support thing that, to ask for a contribution to a transportation system within the town? Could we get, would that be a legitimate request to include in the, is that, is that a benefit that we could ask for?
The, these are written, so the community benefit payments are broad. They are very, written very broadly, so the town can decide how those local initiative funds are used. So if that's on your list of things you would like to do with these funds, we could gather that list together. But I don't think it's something we would spell out in the agreement. I think the funds are there. I think the town will have to decide how those local community initiative funds are used.
Okay, then I, those types of things don't have to be spelled out as far as community support.
Typically, what we've seen are community benefit payments that are in some way or another related to the establishment coming into town. As you said, for caregiver, there's, you know, an area outside the town would like to see beautification efforts, too. We've seen some, some community benefit payments towards having, you know, a dare officer. They're, they're usually structured towards, you know, police training, drug awareness, additional, additional benefits to the town. You know, there's, again, nothing from the CCC or in the statute, in my opinion, that prohibits the town from asking for community benefit payments to address specific items. However, I, I do think that the community benefit payment should be reasonable in, when viewing the, the whole host community agreement and the terms of the host community agreement as a whole.
I don't mean to be, I don't mean to be difficult and go back to this again, but when you were going over the community benefit payment and what it's typically used for, again, you brought up police training. But I thought I was just told that police training has to come out of the 3% impact fee. So is additional police training and appropriate use of community benefit payment, or does that have to come out of the 3%? Because again, we just said that it could be a community benefit payment.
It, it can be both. You can have police training for something completely different than anything associated with drug awareness in a benefit payment. It's...
But if you use your entire, just, just bear with me. If you use your entire 3% impact fee on fixing a road because it's impacted by the operation, then you can use your community benefit money for the training you wanted otherwise.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. So I do want, so, okay, so we're back to where I was in the first place. I do want police training under a community benefit payment, because it's additional money for training. And if we don't have it as a community benefit payment, and we used all our money for, like, road repair because of the amount of traffic Sturbridge gets, if it's not listed here, then there's no money in the community benefit... Sturbridge gets, if it's not listed here, then there's no money in the community benefit payment for police training.
We will make sure.
See, that's just my priority. Here's, my priority is like public safety, traffic, and how it will negatively impact our residents. Because like what I said a few weeks ago, right now, there's a lot of people that are driving under the influence of cannabis. They're going down Route 20 and 131 on a regular basis. I'm a runner. I run every single day. And I have yet to go for one run where a car is not reeking of cannabis on Route 20, and then they're getting on the highway. So what I want to make sure is that all of our police are trained to know, just like they can give a breathalyzer for alcohol, that they are trained to stop and, and deter, because it's only going to get worse. We don't even have a retail store in Sturbridge yet. And it's already happening all the time. And I want to make sure there's enough money, I don't care where it's coming from, that our officers are able to pull over and address driving under the influence of cannabis. Because again, I run at seven in the morning it's happening. I run at six o'clock at night, I smell it. And if we use all our money of the three percent on road repair, then I want to make sure there's money in the community benefit payment, if it's appropriate, which is very reasonably tied to the industry, for a police training, for all of our officers.
Yes.
That's where I'm coming from, especially with access to the highways.
Mary wants it in both places, so she wants the language deleted that it would be taken from the impact fee.
Well, wait a minute. I think it's going to be in both. But the, the, the benefit payment will be broad enough.
To encompass.
To encompass it.
Okay.
If, if the town chooses to use it that way.
And an adequate amount to address it. Because again, we're like a city. That's how much traffic Sturbridge has, and we have access to the highways. And we are like a city when it comes to that. We're not a remote town in Western Mass. We're, we're at the heart of things. And that's why we have three very, very large, professional, knowledgeable applicants that want to be in Sturbridge, because it's going to be profitable. And I just want to make sure the safety is there. I couldn't care less about anything else other than safety and reducing the negative impacts to Sturbridge residents. I don't care about giving a discount to cannabis or any of that. I just want our officers trained. Because right now, it's not even legal to carry it over state lines. But yet, we're basing our profit on carrying it over into state lines. I mean, it's right in the writing of the applicants. And when I met with the applicants, they're wanting to get the Connecticut market. And it's not even legal to take the cannabis over the line. So I, I just, I'm concerned with the safety, and that's my priority.
I do believe from reviewing the meeting tape that all of the applicants, and if I misspeak, I apologize, and I will go back and we can negotiate with all of the applicants, but I do believe that they were all agreeable to increasing the number of officers in that provision.
Okay. And I spoke with one officer that said, because I had said to him, you know, in favor of all of you being trained. He said, forget that. He said, with them, with, with more, with the kind of retail that could be coming in, we should almost have another officer. That was his suggestion. So, I mean, you know, that's, that's where I'm at. I, I'm going to favor whoever takes public safety and the most seriously.
And a community impact fee could be used to fund the hiring of another officer. That is, again, in my opinion, a reasonable use of that.
Of course, but it's going to get expended pretty quickly. You know, it's going to get expended pretty quickly.
Okay, does anyone else have anything?
Well, I think the traffic study issue needs to be resolved. Were we satisfied with the capping of the visits per day in lieu of a traffic study from each location? I was unclear about that at the end of the meeting.
Well, everybody offered six hundred. I, I, HEAL did a traffic study, and I commend them for that. They did it back, I think in relation to the medical, but we require, I mean, they, we did it for the medical. I don't understand.
It was part of the zoning.
It was part of their special permit and site plan review.
Correct. But, but, but now we've like loosened it entirely. I personally would have liked a traffic study done. I don't think, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think a traffic study to determine how many customers we can reasonably handle.
For the special permit, they will be required to do a traffic study.
Yes.
At each location.
Through the planning.
Through the planning board, but then that, that's out of our hands in the host agreement. We have no say on that area.
That's how it worked with HEAL.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Well, I.
I'm just wondering if we're good with capping the visits per day.
I'm happy with capping the visits at six hundred. And then they'll do the traffic study.
When they go through their site plan review.
All right. Okay. Let me, let me ask this. I, I would want a traffic study, but I'm going to get out voted on that. The attorney for HEAL was actually very informative and said, the way you control the amount of customers really is by knowing how many cash registers they're going to have. Because that's going to determine a lot of the traffic. Like if there's twenty cash registers all taking in appointments, you're going to hit the six hundred pretty darn fast. And I wonder, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, I just want to know if it's an appropriate area in a host agreement. We could put six hundred customers. Is it, would it also be appropriate if we negotiated how many registers they agree to have in their retail shop? Has that ever been done?
Not that I am aware of. I do believe that each of the applicants has proposed the number of registers in their applications, or majority of them have at least stated it during our negotiations. And I do believe that some of them have also said in our discussions about traffic, that the way that they would calculate the amount of customers per day is based on the number of registers, based on the number of employees, and also the time that they assume that they are limiting to each customer. I think some applicants have said that they take a longer time meeting with certain customers than others. So there may be more factors that are, that impact the number of customers per day than just the amount of registers.
But regardless of how many registers they have, they've agreed to six hundred as a maximum.
I believe most of the applicants have. I, I do think that caregiver has submitted a, a proposal to have the first thirty days of operation to four hundred customers, the second thirty days to five hundred customers, and then six hundred thereafter. I haven't seen a similar proposal.
They just capped it at six hundred.
And, and that would be written into the host agreement?
Yes.
We can certainly do that, yes.
Okay. And then the other thing I had requested is there some type of language that requires them to submit documentation so that we are able to monitor that the six hundred customers are not violating. Like, you know, they can say six hundred. None of us are going to go there on a regular basis and make sure there's six hundred. We need some method by which we can, so they're going to need to submit their.
Well, upon our request.
Yeah, Jeff mentioned that.
It would be upon our request, they would submit it to us.
See, to me, that, I would want it submitted quarterly so that, because why are we going to request it?
Because we want to check.
But that should be part of the, if they're agreeing to six hundred, then it shouldn't be when we request it. It should be on a regular basis to show that they are not violating the six hundred, violating the agreement, just like they submit their financials. I don't want to have to vote as a board to request.
No, it would be upon my request, or the administrator's request.
That's not good. I, I would want them to do it on a regular basis as part of their doing business to establish that they are honoring the six hundred. I don't want the onus to be on the town to say, hey, you know what, we want this submitted. Then they'll say, why? Da-da-da-da. It was, no, it's, it's in the host agreement. Every quarter, you submit to show that you are honoring the six hundred customers a day. That, that should be as a matter of course, not on us. Because the only reason we'd request it is if we think it's getting abused. I want it documented, just like with their financials, where we're looking at the amount of revenue. I want to know what their appointment schedule is. It should be on them if they're agreeing to six hundred a day. And I don't know how the rest of the board, Priscilla's nodding her head, but.
Great. I think she's, I think, I agree with everything she said tonight.
Again, if that's something that the board would like for us to negotiate, we can certainly go back with the applicants and discuss that.
Otherwise, there's no teeth in the six hundred customers a day.
Well, I would disagree with that.
Well, the teeth is all with you, not with the board.
Well, of course, it's coming to you if there's a problem.
But it shouldn't have to be if there's a problem. It should be as a matter of course if they're agreeing to six hundred applicants.
I agree with that. But does the board want to see every quarter of the report?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So that's fine. I, I wasn't aware you wanted to see every quarter of the report.
Or at least our town administrator. I want it to be part of the process that they submit it. Yes.
Yeah, it's my, it's my understanding that, you know, every transaction is well documented, you know, is, is good record-keeping at adult-use marijuana facilities as far as the exact time when sales occur in, in all facilities statewide. So that, that information is.
Readily available.
Would be available, at least to the, you know, Control Commission. And so I, well, my topic of traffic-related sales was, is, I, you know, I don't really care if it's six hundred per day. I would, I think the sales should be restricted during peak hours of, of vehicular traffic. If, if there's a high volume of sales during the midday when there's not a lot of traffic on the roadways, that's, that has less impact than if there's a lot of customers going in and out, say, during the PM peak hours of, of traffic. That, that can create more traffic. You know, businesses are trying to have people come into work and leave work at off-peak hours. So I think some, some accommodation of, of sales during peak hours of traffic volume would be reasonable, rather than trying to just limit the total per day. That's.
So we want, like between four and six PM, we want to reduce the number of people they can visit?
Well, that, if you're trying to impact, if you're trying to reduce the impact on traffic, that's what you would do. I mean, there's, there's no sense to, you know, that, that would be the, the logical thing to do, is restrict the sales during peak hours of traffic volume. Maybe counterintuitive as far as sales go, but on high-volume streets, that's really what, what has to, what is being done in some very congested areas is, you know, trying to get people not to go there during peak hour, but to use off-peak hour to go purchase, you know, do their purchases.
Priscilla?
I thought that in their agreements, they started later for that purpose. Because I think they said this, if I'm, if I recall correctly, that they're opening at a later time so as not to impact the morning commute.
He's talking about the afternoon commute.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't think the.
That's kind of, I mean, that's very restrictive, I think.
Yeah, I mean, in the afternoon, you're talking, even right now, three, three to six-thirty.
It starts at three, at four, at five, at six. So you can't, I don't think you could do that to any business.
I don't disagree.
Yeah. Oh, no, 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 but I wouldn't want to restrict a business based on those hours.
It's for three and a half hours.
Yeah, it's. I mean, I think they're trying to do what they can with the hours and with the cap on the number of customer appointments.
But what Mike's saying is, you have a six hundred cap, and then maybe from like five to six, or six to seven, there's less appointments then, than there are one to two in the afternoon.
Mm-hmm.
Which also would alleviate, I would support that. And I just want to say for the record.
Excuse me, can I just, can I?
Yeah, sure.
But if you're looking at afternoon traffic, it really starts at three.
Yeah.
Okay, it started at three. So are we going to knock this down from three to six-thirty?
No, I don't, I don't think you can do it for that length of time. But I think five to six, I don't know. I think a smaller amount of time. I mean, traffic starts at three, but that's not when commuters are coming home.
Oh, it is.
Well, can I, can I just go back to something? Because you're renegotiating. I like CPC's hours the most. I think that is the most sensitive to the traffic concerns of Sturbridge because they're open eleven to eight. And the other one, and the other applicants are, are open one to two hours longer. So I'm just saying that, that's something that I will look at. I like the hours of CPC, what they have proposed. The other ones go nine to eight, ten to nine, and they have the fewest hours, eleven to eight. And I think that would be the best for the traffic concern. So I'm pleased with those hours.
So how does the board want to proceed with restricting the number of customers during certain hours of the day?
I think it's getting too complicated and too restrictive on companies. I think customers themselves will be making appointments when it's convenient for them. So I think, I think it's self-policing there. I mean, we've got a cap on the number of customers, you know, it'll work out. Chase?
I just want to say, I agree with what you just said. I think that the point behind using the appointment-only app, they're only going to allow so many people in these stores within an hour. And I think that's going to handle quite a bit of our concerns. So I don't want to restrict on certain hours when this app's in place.
And, and if the board would like, if the board would like to see the hours of operations limited for other applicants, we can certainly ask those applicants if that's something that they would be agreeable to.
Never hurts to ask.
Yeah. By comparison to other types of retail establishments, the, the volumes are considerably lower. I mean, they're more like, you know, a bank as compared to, you know, a, a retail store that, or a convenience store or something like that. I mean, convenience store would have a lot of traffic during peak hour where a bank really doesn't have a lot. So their, their use or their traffic generation model would, would be far lower than what would be expected at normal retail anyhow. So I don't see it's a huge problem, the traffic generation.
I agree.
I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm the one that doesn't see it that way because there was an article in the Globe. It was either Boston Globe or the Telegram, because I believe it was when Lemonster, was it Lemonster that opened?
Lester.
Lester, thank you. They saw a thousand customers on opening day. Now, granted, that was opening day, but what I'm looking at is a thousand customers, and it shut the town down.
But that was also the first one that opened in the state.
Yes, but the point is, it was a thousand customers. So that's what a thousand customers did to that town. So, and we're agreeing to six hundred on a regular basis. I think even then, that, that's still going to be a significant amount of traffic. That's all. On a regular basis.
Lester's really not a good comparison. They also have only nine.
In, in, by Friday.
Yeah. Right.
Well, we have all that too. I mean, no, but it, the point, the point is, that shows what a thousand customers a day does to a town. That's my point. That's what a thousand customers did to that town and the residents. So I.
So have you gotten all, we thank you for your input.
So six hundred cap, traffic studying not required.
Well, that will be required when they, special permit.
During the special permit site plan review process, seeing if the other applicants would agree to change their hours of operations. And the board is not going to ask the applicants to limit the amount of customers during certain peak hours. Is that correct?
Well, here's the thing. I mean, I, you know how we, oh, I'm sorry.
Real quick, I just have a question. Say you do ask them to open later, stay open shorter, whatever.
Close for lunch.
Say, this is going a couple months, everything's going really good, and they want to go back to, you know, an hour earlier, an hour later. Is that something that changes, I guess? Or is this gone to ahead, this is it?
So it's, the host community agreement is open to amendment, provided both parties are agreeable to amending the terms. The host community agreement also has to be enforceable by the town. So in theory, if the town doesn't enforce an agreement, there's no one else enforcing that provision. It would be up to the town to enforce it.
So you're better off starting strict.
Right.
And then you can go back because you, rest assured, you will not be able to go the other way with any of these applicants.
I just want.
We're not going to be able to open up the host agreement and then say, you know what, could you limit? And they'll say, no, you were zoned for it, you agreed to it. And their attorneys are never going to let us become strict. This, this is our opportunity to have a strict agreement. If we want to loosen it up in the future, we can. But we have to protect our residents because, but what I did want to say is, you know, when you said, here, what will you offer us? And, and you kind of let, let it up to the And you kind of let it up to the applicants to kind of fill in the blanks. I would, you know, you said this won't be required. I would like to know what the applicant, if an applicant is willing to do a traffic study, and they're willing to put it in the host agreement, I'm certainly-
But Mary, that's redundant.
Well, no, but we don't all have to agree, just like, we don't all have to agree-
They will have to do a traffic study when they go through-
But that's not with, that's not within the purview of the Board of Selectmen.
That's right, and it shouldn't be in our purview.
Oh, I disagree. I think it could be-
Part of the site plan review.
But if they, okay, but all of us, we're probably all gonna vote for two different applicants. We have to vote for two out of three. So this is our opportunity to say what kind of things that we would like to see in it.
Sure.
I wouldn't refuse it if someone, you know, if an applicant was willing to limit the amount from 4:00 to 6:00, and they're willing to put it in the host agreement, I wouldn't turn around and say, no, don't do it.
And Mary, that's what we did. So we've taken the application packets by each applicant, and that's how we created the host community agreements that have been presented to the board. All of the provisions in here have been provisions that the applicants have come, come in with their applications and offered. So for example, the discount provision. It wasn't clear how the board would take that provision. We put it in because that was something that the applicants have offered. If the applicant offers something above what the town, excuse me, what the board is requesting tonight, we will certainly make the board aware of that.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
And give the board that opportunity to review, but I think what Jeff was saying is, the way that the host community agreement negotiations had worked with Jeff was, whatever the applicants had offered to the town, we put those, we plugged that into the, to the host community agreement.
There were some guidance on that. But again, we, because of the issues, we weren't, there were, there was kind of an accumulation of benefits rather than, how much money are you gonna give?
So when you say differing provisions, the reason that those provisions differ are based on, one, what the applicants presented to us, and two, what they agreed to when we went back and forth and negotiated.
Right, but what I'm saying is, when they came before us, they were willing to do, when we asked for something, they were willing to do more. So, you know, I'm just saying that-
It gets to the point where you ask too much more, even on the traffic. Now, Mike mentioned the type of businesses that are in traffic. Take, for example, Yankee Spirits. I mean, how many customers do they get a day?
At peak hours.
At peak hours, all day. I mean, if you go there and sit in the parking lot, it's-
It's amazing.
Sometimes I wish I had a nickel or even a penny for each customer that I'm laying in, so-
What's our cut on liquor tax?
Yeah, well, I'm happy, but personally, penny to me.
I understand. I do have a point on, when you talk about the host community agreement being, you can revisit certain sections. One in particular is, for the first two weeks, they need a Sturbridge police officer there during the opening or some period of time. And then they can ask to get that lifted. Same with the appointment app, only they can ask to get that lifted. You don't have to grant it, but they have to ask.
And let me, let me just, I just want to go back to the traffic study for a minute, and I know it's not gonna win the day. But to say that the planning board's gonna require the traffic study anyway, at that point, we've already determined who the applicant is. The traffic study is intended to determine which location can better handle the amount of traffic. So it's a done deal. At that point, the traffic study does nothing. For example, if, if the location by Friendly's is better able to handle traffic, and the traffic study comes back and says, yes, it can easily handle 600 cars a day, and I'm just being hypothetical, it could have been the Pauletti's building, too, I don't know. Or, and the Pauletti's study comes back and says, it can only comfortably handle 400 cars a day. Those traffic studies are helping us to determine the amount of appointments that we are going to agree to. So by saying 600, I'm trying to use the study to help me determine which location is better suited for traffic flow. And if we don't do it now, it doesn't matter when it gets to the planning board, we've already chosen our two applicants.
Well, Mary, it does, because the planning board can deny a special permit if they're not satisfied with all the requirements being fulfilled by the companies.
But then we've already chosen who the applicants are. We've already-
They can deny the permit.
But then it just comes back-
Or they can put restrictions on it.
Right, but-
So the planning board can deny a special permit. A special permit is required for an establishment to locate in town, so without a special permit, you wouldn't have someone come in.
Okay, but again, it doesn't help us determine which location's better. The location's already determined at that point. So we'll just let it go with that.
If you had a traffic generating business that wasn't a marijuana operation, that was gonna have 600 clients a day, you would, you would be, you would want to put the same restrictions on them?
No, but we can't. But here's the thing, this is a brand-new industry. The CCC has already put restrictions on this type of business that they don't put on any other business, like they can't advertise the day they open, et cetera, et cetera. So the CCC has already given the clear signal, being a new business, that we have no idea what kind of impact it has. They've already put additional restrictions on the business. So that argument, to me, is not very strong. Priscilla?
I, I wasn't in agreement with Mary in the beginning when she talked about the traffic study, but her rationale does make sense, a whole lot of sense. And to get back to Jeff's question, I think because it's such a new territory, that maybe at this point, but if somewhere along the line, they decide to put in another marijuana retailer, maybe you won't need it, because you will have proven whatever it can be. We know that it only can bring in so much business. I think Mary is right. I think by the time the planning board gets it, it's water over the dam.
So to close the loop, are, does the board now want traffic studies before a final decision?
I don't know how the board feels, but I know, I totally agree with Mary.
I personally don't think, because I, so I wouldn't vote for it. It's not in our purview. It's up to the planning board and following site plan review. And I think, even as Mike said, conditions can be put on it. I think it's a burden for the three companies, particularly if one of them doesn't get it. If two of them don't get it, I mean, there's no guarantee. We do not have to approve. But I, I'm not in favor of requiring a traffic study.
Yeah, I would, I'm kind of dubious of-
It's gonna be done.
I'm dubious of the benefits of a traffic study at this time because of a couple reasons. There's no, you know, different traffic engineers would pick different, there's no specific Institute of Traffic Engineers trip generation study for adult-use marijuana facilities, particularly in, on the East Coast here, and particularly in Massachusetts. I mean, if you use it from Colorado with all the mega-stores are, it's not gonna be relevant to what is being done here in Massachusetts. So, and, and I know of no real studies yet for this type of facility, so any traffic engineer's gonna have to use a lot of judgment to do a, a traffic study. And that's gonna allow a wide variation on trip generation and the like. Until, you know, maybe, like, you know, I agree with, with our chairman that maybe in a few years, there'll be a lot more data on, on adult-use marijuana facilities and the way they're regulated in Massachusetts. But I'm very dubious of the results of a traffic study, because it's, it's so new. I mean, there are certain types of retail uses that have been studied and studied. I mean, you could go, you can predict how much a McDonald's restaurant will generate, how much a Panera will generate, but you can't, adult-use marijuana facility, you're not gonna know, you know, at this time. And, I mean, you, how much, how much is that related to the volume of traffic in the street? It's, it hasn't been determined yet. I mean, you can have a high-volume street that would generate almost no customers, and you might have a very low-volume street that would generate a ton of customers.
Priscilla?
Because it's a different use.
That's all well and good, but they're gonna do a traffic study at some point, anyway. So I think it's a simple situation. I don't think it has anything to do with the marijuana in one respect. You have site A, B, and C, I'm not gonna name them. Site A, B, and C. You want to know site A, who has 600 possible visitors a day, what is the traffic route, and how much is that impact on site A? Site B, site C, okay? So whether it's a marijuana industry or whatever it is, you're just looking to find the traffic impact, knowing you have 600, at least, 600, because that's the maximum, coming in a day. So whether we do that traffic study, or somebody else does that traffic study three weeks from now, it's still a traffic study. And to me, I totally agree, because we're gonna pick, let's say we pick site B, whoever that may be, okay? And let's say the traffic study shows that the worst place is site B. There's no guarantee that planning is gonna, is gonna not allow that permit. There's no guarantee. Whereas we have the purview to say, okay, wow, site B, gee, we didn't, we didn't see this, we didn't think of this. And we're gonna see it at that point, and then we're gonna say, well, you know what? Then we need to go to site A and site C. That's, that, in the beginning, I did not agree with her standing, but as she explained the rationale, I totally agree that, I totally support her rationale for those reasons. It, we're the ones making the choices. We're the ones deciding who's coming in and where they're going. Then we need to know the impact in the town. And I, I totally agree with Selectmen Dowling.
Jeff?
So we'll need to know tonight, or they will, whether or not you're gonna require a traffic study as part of the HCA, because we won't be able to resubmit back to you until they do the study.
But here's the thing, Jeff, wait a minute.
Okay, sorry.
Wait a minute, hold on, listen to what I said. If you want a traffic study, we've gotta send them out to go get it, and then they come back here with, with new HCAs after the study. So this will take a hiatus for some period of time.
And, and again, just, that's if the applicants are agreeable.
Yes.
Wait a minute, Mary. Jean, you had your hand up.
And then do we have the traffic study peer reviewed?
Right.
That's right. It's the way it's done. Anyways, can we, we need to move on.
Okay, so can I make a motion then?
Certainly.
I make a motion that a traffic study be submitted by each of the applicants in order for the Board of Selectmen to make a, to make the appointment of two sites or, which is what we can do, of the two sites, so that we can make a better, more comprehensive, you can cut that down, Samantha, but, to make a more comprehensive decision.
Second. Any discussion?
I have a discussion. Mary, probably gonna get voted down, but again, that doesn't stop an applicant from being willing to do a traffic study. You say, are we gonna require it? That can be negotiated. Applicant A might say, we have no problem, we'll do a traffic study. We think our location's the best one, and the traffic study's gonna show it. They may be saying, we'll do a traffic study. Applicant B might say, you know what, we don't want to do it. You know, I mean, I don't know, we're, we're opening-
Mary.
Hold on, but I get that. But in order for you to make a decision based upon the traffic study, you gotta have the traffic study.
Correct.
I know, right, but that's one aspect, that's one aspect that we weigh in the process of who we select.
Yeah, but I, I personally do not think, as Jean says, it isn't just a traffic study. You have to have a peer review and everything. We keep pushing this down and down and down the road. If any of the applicants, on their own volition, want to have a traffic study done, that's fine. But I am personally not voting for the motion. Priscilla?
Yeah, then I would recommend, this is just a suggestion to those who are looking to come into town, that if the board votes this down, my recommendation would be that you do it anyway, because I think she made a very good point. Every site thinks it's got the best site. What's better than the proof in the pudding to say, hey, you know what, here's this traffic study, and we do have the best site, because we have the least impact on the community. I mean, that's just a suggestion.
Oh, no, that's what I said, they could do it on their volition.
Because otherwise-
But they wouldn't have a peer review on that.
Otherwise, whatever decision we make can be from you, if the traffic study shows it to be the wrong decisions.
But-
On, from, from whenever-
They won't get a peer review on their traffic study until, and if it goes to the planning board.
Well, can't they use the same traffic study and then, and then send it to planning, anyway? Jean, if they do this, can I ask Jean, may I ask Jean for you? If we require a traffic study, can, can they use that same, I would hope, the answer is yes, they can use that same study and submit it to you for peer review?
Well, it depends on the, you know, what they include in the study. Of course, they could submit the same to planning. However, the benefit of a peer review is to review what their traffic engineer is saying and determine if our reviewers agree with what they're saying. So you'll just have the benefit of the study, but you won't have the benefit of that third-party review saying, yes, I agree, or no, they used the wrong factor, or they took their counts at the wrong hour, that's not really a peak hour. And then our peer review also looks at internal circulation, parking pedestrian-wise. So there's a lot more that's looked at in the traffic study and that analysis of the site plan than just the raw data. So you'll get a narrative and raw data, but you won't get the benefit of anything else. It won't be in context of the site plan.
But the policy allows us to engage outside consultants for help, right? The marijuana policy we adopted. So we could get the peer review if the board wanted a peer review.
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got a motion, we've got a second. All in favor of the motion, all opposed to the motion. Okay, motion fails.
Last comment on traffic studies. If one of them decides to go out and get one, then this process will stop until they're ready to res, to submit that study. Because I'm not gonna put one at a disadvantage over the other two.
Well, I wouldn't say necessarily, because we're not requiring it.
I understand.
I mean-
But I'm confused, though, because they all, the two that we select have to get traffic studies.
Yes.
Now, I understand the board's concern that planning may not do anything with them, or, I probably worded that wrong. Planning, you know, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't mean it like that.
Scratch the tape.
But, yeah.
Well, she's not, she's the planning director.
She's the boss. No, you know what I meant, Jean, but-
The board makes the decision.
No, I understand. I didn't mean it.
We know, Chase. We know, Chase.
I, I, so, they'll have to get one if they're elected.
Yeah.
I think that's a bridge we crossed, eventually. I think it's a bridge that, personally, for me, it's a bridge we crossed after we picked the two. I feel like these guys have been coming in now for quite a few months. I'm ready to make it.
I agree with you, but if one of them decides tonight, tomorrow, I'm gonna go get a traffic study, this thing stops until we get, until they do that, because that puts them at a disadvantage. If I bring you back two brand-new agreements without traffic studies, but they're out there doing their diligence on a traffic study. So they all get to be ready to come back at the same time for you to consider all three agreements.
I'm not in favor of stopping process. One of them wants to.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I'm not, they're all coming back at the same time. They're not coming back peacefully.
Chairman, I'd just like, I'd just like to point out that we, that one of the sites already has a traffic study.
For the medical, but not for the retail.
Well-
That's not retail, though. That's different.
And I just want to say, I don't think we've dragged this process out at all. I think that it's, it's going to be a big impact on our community, and I don't think we've dragged it out at all. I think that we've been meeting regularly. We went to all the facilities, those of us who could. We, in fact, didn't get the host agreements till a holiday weekend, and I took it with me on a holiday weekend over Thanksgiving. We, as a board, have had very limited time to study the host agreement, so I vehemently disagree. We didn't get this until the day after Thanksgiving on a Friday, and we had literally three days to look at it, the weekend, and it was a holiday weekend. And I would never have required any staff over Thanksgiving weekend to have to review three legal documents with comments. And I, for one, took it to New York with me and did, and I'm sure the rest of the board did as well, because we were all very well-informed. So I vehemently disagree that this has been dragged on. The Board of Selectmen have been given limited time in reviewing this host agreement. To do our due diligence. Limited time. We were given one weekend.
Okay, wait a minute, Mary.
That's on me. I made, I gave you them as soon as all three agreements were ready to go.
Okay, but-
I was hoping they were two weeks prior to that.
And we were ready for Monday, so we did not drag it on. We, we were giving-
I'm not saying you did. I'm just saying, I'm owning the fact that you got it the day before Thanksgiving, because I waited for all three of them to be in a form acceptable.
I get it, but I also, she's right. We had till Monday, and it was a holiday weekend. And you're right, no staff would be asked to do this.
No staff, and so to say we've dragged this on, I guess that's where I take issue, because I think it's exactly the opposite.
Well, let's say we've been working slower than we should. Well, let's say we've been working slower than we should, and we've been redundant in a lot of our concerns.
I don't agree, council was, well.
Anyway.
So, what meeting?
Next. I don't know, it depends on what, where the applicants, from what they've heard, and what they feel they need to do to resubmit, and when we can get that back to you in a draft agreement for each one. And again, if one decides to do a traffic study, that's the critical path, and that's what will determine when those come back to you.
Mrs. Chairman, if I may, I guess the question is, does, would the board like, um, us to negotiate with the applicants to see if they are willing to do a traffic study, or is the board's position that a traffic study is not required at this time?
Well, we voted not to require.
Right.
Not not to-
Not to require.
Not to require.
Not to require. Okay, so-
And I, for one, would like, um, more than two, more than two or three days to review the final host agreement.
And not the day before Christmas.
And and, yeah, and and not the weekend, and not the, and not the weekend in between that and New Year's.
I agree. And if we're gonna look at this on January 6th, then we need this either, um, next week, or it doesn't go for January 6th. It goes for the next meeting.
Because I agree.
Well, I mean, January 6th, somewhere two weeks.
That's fine, we'll-
I I did some, have some other questions for the board, if that's all right, um, based on my review of the, um, last meeting. I know that there was some discussion about, um, paragraph three, I believe it was, of the, um, agreement that talked about, um, in the event the town receives five or more complaints from citizen, from citizens, I believe there was some discussion about that number and limiting the number to a specific timeframe, or increasing or decreasing the number, and it wasn't specifically clear if that was the board's opinion as a whole, and whether the board wanted us to renegotiate that provision of the agreement.
I think the two weeks wasn't sufficient. It too, it was too short a period of time to get that many. You wanted the time longer.
It was the last paragraph, the last paragraph in section three of the agreement.
We were gonna propose a longer period of time?
Correct, yeah. I mean, you know, we might get seven, and it might take three weeks, and under the language right here, it's it's much too stringent, the two-week period for for my liking.
Would the board like to see what each applicant offers, or was the board, um, thinking of something to ask the applicants to agree to?
Within a quarter?
Yeah, that would be reasonable.
Yep, I agree with.
Can you clarify that?
A quarter, three months.
Calendar quarters in three months.
Yeah, three months.
So, five or more complaints within three months?
And you're, yeah, I don't know.
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
There was also, um, comments about the enforcement provisions, and I believe some members had suggested that they wanted different enforcement provisions for different types of, um, violations. Again, I'm wondering if that's something that the board as a whole would like us to renegotiate, and if the board had any specific, um, I, specific language or specific types of violations that they believe should be subject to, um, a different penalty.
Wasn't it, um, vile vile, that if there was a violation, it was also suspension of work for a day? Wasn't that what it was, too, rather than just money?
Yeah, I agree, Priscilla Jimis. One of, I don't remember which it was, but, um, I'm less interested in in getting the money, and very interested in having them suspend operations, 'cause, um, there has to be some, that is a much bigger financial, um, impact on them than a fine.
Yeah. I think that's what it was, right?
Right.
But there was some conversation about the type of violation and the severity.
Well, I don't know if I got support for that, but, um, if if it was to a minor, I I thought that there were some violations that are more important than others, you know, um.
But if it's not minor, it's criminal anyway.
I know it's criminal, yes, but I mean, it it shouldn't be, it's criminal, but at the same time, while the criminal charges are pending, a $250 fine, I would have it, it's not gonna do it, yeah. But I I did note, I think it was, one of them's, um, suspensions were longer, and I favored that over the other contracts myself.
Um, there was also some comment about the security provisions in, um, section 10 of the agreement, and I know there was a comment that the police department should approve rather than just review security plans.
That was my point, yes.
Is that something that the board would like us to negotiate with the applicants?
Yes.
On enforcement, would it be better to have a range of, uh, days of suspension for each, uh, violation, first or second? Because there may be a major violation that the board would wanna impose a greater penalty than if it was a minor violation?
I think that's what I was trying to clarify before. Does the board have specific, um, violations that you'd like to carve out of the agreement and have a-
Well, maybe if it's like, just a thought, I know we do first violation, whatever it might be, um, and then maybe if we said that if they had a criminal violation, then that would stand alone with how much we wanna suspend them for. Sort of like, first violation, second, third, but if criminal violation, then a different suspension. I I mean, that's just a thought, I'm just throwing out. I don't know how anybody else feels.
A criminal violation?
Like, if they got caught in a sting, like, our police go to all the stores-
Sell to a minor.
-to see if they sell to minors, okay? And if they were to do that to one of these retailers, and one of them failed, then that should be, that's a criminal violation, and it should have a bigger penalty than a day suspension. Just my thought, that's all.
Totally agree.
Well, wouldn't a criminal criminal violation go beyond any of the board?
I mean, so the CCC does have regulations that govern enforcement provisions. Um, you know, if the applicants are agreeable to having the board have its own enforcement provisions in these agreements, then I think it's certainly something that the board can, um, ask for in an agreement, similar to liquor licensing. You know, you have your own, um, operations to make sure that there aren't minors, um, being sold to. The CCC will be doing that. Um, but at the same time, I believe the ABCC does that as well, and the board can have their own police chief do it, um, in addition to the ABCC. So, I I do think that it could be something reasonably requested by the board to, um, you know, have your own, have a provision like that, if that's something that the board was interested in.
I am. And I know, like, um, as Priscilla, uh, as Sluckman Jimis said, with our, we typically would get a grant, I believe, so that our police officers could go into all of our liquor stores, 'cause we have a lot of them, and our restaurants. And I think we didn't do it last year, because we didn't get the grant. And I wonder if that's the kind of, um, thing that can actually be, and I know we can use it with the 3%, but we're using a lot with that 3%, you know?
It's not gonna go very far.
No, it's not gonna go very far. I'm wondering if that could be something that's negotiated, that, um, money be, um, given earmarked each year for our own officers to go in and and do a sting operation, because every year, we typically find at least one restaurant or bar that has served to a minor. And I'm not saying, I hope it doesn't happen in the cannabis industry, but I I do wanna have the money to go and do it if we if we can.
We can certainly talk to the applicants to see if they'd be agreeable to something like that.
Okay. Okay, you all set, or did you?
I believe so, unless the board has any questions, or any additional provisions that you would like addressed that I haven't mentioned.
We could probably, if, I think if we think of it, we could email the town administrator who can send it to you. That make sense?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I would ask if you're gonna do that, um-
ASAP.
In the next week or two?
Yeah, well, I mean, if somebody thinks of something at home and can just shoot you an email, that's all. Because sometimes, when it settles, the thoughts come in.
Oh, shucks.
I should've said that.
Okay, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Gene, thank you. Okay, now, I lost the agenda. Okay, okay, next on the agenda, we have, uh, discussion review post-warrant articles. Okay.
Go to the next time?
Um, see in the hour?
Well, that's first of January.
Yeah, and the meeting's what, the 27th?
Twenty-seven.
Well, that gives, uh, FinCom time to look at them, and we can maybe get FinCom's input, and then when we get them, we'll have FinCom's input, and it won't, shouldn't be that hard. It shouldn't be that big a deal.
Yeah.
Probably could set a special meeting.
I would be more apt to wanna set a special meeting, 'cause I think we even had a policy where after 10, we didn't, we didn't have a new, new, new business.
No new business, she's, maybe I forgot that one.
Can we do it this Thursday?
Oh, God, seriously?
'Cause I'm out next week.
I can't on Thursday.
Well, Jeff's out next week.
Oh, well.
So, we're cutting it close.
I mean, if you need to have it next week, we'll do it next week.
That's even worse.
Well, I-
Christmas week.
Yeah, I mean, really, yeah.
There's not sufficient time that following week in between Christmas and New Year's to to to, um, I don't know.
I I should do the New Year, beginning of that week wouldn't be an issue. Just Christmas weeks.
I can't do Monday of that week, and then Tuesday's New Year's Eve, right?
Yes.
Maybe Thursday or Friday?
I could do it Thursday, that that's the, uh, January 2nd.
I can do that.
Yeah, because, how soon are they supposed to be posted?
Two weeks prior.
Prior to them. Not counting Saturdays and Sundays?
Right.
But that is two weeks, isn't it, if we did it on the si- on the 6th? That that's 14 days. It's 20, it's 21 days, it's three weeks. I mean, if they, are we gonna?
But I gotta get FinCom in there somewhere.
But when, is FinCom meeting before we meet again? They're not meeting before we meet?
Because I was gonna have you make sure that these were good for you to go, and then send them to FinCom, because some of these, some of these, you're probably gonna want input on before you send them to FinCom.
When is FinCom meeting?
We have to schedule that. We haven't scheduled it yet.
Yeah, they don't meet regularly.
No, I know, but I know budget season's coming.
Mm-hmm.
Six one half dozen of the other. So, would the second be too late?
We'll have to make it work, if that's when we're going. And I'll see if I can get FinCom the following week.
Talk in the evening, Mary?
Yeah.
The second.
Second is Thursday, and FinCom should be able to meet Tuesday.
We'll see what we can do.
It should be. What time are you looking at, Mary? On the, on the second?
Um.
We do five o'clock?
Five thirty.
Five, 5:30?
Five.
I can do it.
Can everybody do five?
So, what is it, five or 5:30?
Five.
Five, okay. Is that okay for you, Chase?
Yeah, that's good, five's good.
Okay, now, the only thing, I do have a comment. Jeff, I noticed the way these articles are numbered.
Mm-hmm.
One, two, three. We don't number them that way. We pick up from our annual town meeting.
I understand, it was just for the memo purposes.
Oh.
That's all. So, you could relate the memo to the attachment.
Oh, okay, because we got messed up once.
Mm-hmm.
People say, senior centers capitalized.
I understand.
Okay, then, um, the last thing we do have is the waiver of the $275 zoning board of appeals application fee for the Fisk Hill water pump station project. Questions on that? I mean, it's a town project.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, is there a motion then to waive the fee?
So, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Okay, new business, Priscilla?
No.
Chase?
Nope.
Mike?
It's after 10, it can't be.
Yeah, it's after 10, right.
It's listed. Who's gonna, who's gonna enforce it?
Portions.
I'm not taking a motion. Any real new business?
No.
Mary?
No.
Um, I just have, um, we do have to discuss, um, Jeff's merit pay. We always do that, December, January. Jeff's going to give us an update on his goals, so that's, um-
We have to evaluate him first?
No, evaluation is later. That's for his pay for next year, that we, um, consider, and we consider the goals. Like every other department head, the merit pay is based on their goals. Okay, so, he'll get that to us.
I'm finishing up the department heads first. That's my priority, then I'll get you-
You're, I mean, you're in no hurry then.
No, I think-
You haven't spent the money.
Well, I think getting the department heads done first is the priority.
Oh, yes, no, I'm just joking, just joking. Ken, sorry you stayed so long.
I haven't really spent the money.
Well, I can't say I'm already happy or not.
You know, well, we're not too happy either.
No kidding? Well, the whole warrants, there were 14 warrants. There are 14 warrants, and it was in with the 14 warrants.
Yeah.
When was it made, actually?
November 2nd.
January.
January 2nd, I'm sorry, January 2nd, is the special meeting.
Don't give him a heart attack.
Yeah, and Ken, that's what we're doing that night, just the, that's all we're doing that night of the warrant articles.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Five o'clock.
Five?
Five. Okay, have a nice holiday.
You, too, thank you.
Tell Ian and Rebecca out there. Okay, did we get a motion? Oh, no, correspondence, oh, gosh.
There were some.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I'm on, if I can find the page. Am I supposed to?
Yeah, nothing, nothing earth-shattering.
I do have one comment about National Grid. We're looking at February, first meeting in February for them to come out and talk about outage.
Oh, good. Yeah, they'll say you do have a lot.
Yeah.
Good. Do you need a motion, Madam Chair?
No, we didn't do minutes. Oh, that won't take too long?
Yeah.
They've they've gotten better. I just had two, which I didn't get back to on, 'cause this weekend was, and this week. On page 270, which is page two, under Town Administrator, one, two, three, four, five lines down, Selectman Suppanot made it clear he believes an EPA permit is necessary, not just an EPA. And then over on the next page, set date for Winter Town Meeting, just says Blanchard.
Yep, I'm sorry, okay, Chair.
But that's okay. Some people call me Blanchard, but-
It's impolite.
Just like the man's hat on was. Anybody else have anything? Okay, is there a motion to approve as amended? So, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor? Five twenty. Okay, Priscilla, you're on.
Votes were yours.
Second. Any discussion?
Hey, everybody have a man's voice, happy holidays.
Oh, we didn't, we didn't vote.
Oh, you didn't vote?
I said discussion.